We're going to call the meeting to order. It is 7:02. If we could have all the trustees to the dais. Trustee Withrow, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the back of the state of America and to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We'll call our meeting to order on Tuesday, July 10th, for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, and it's 7:03. The first item on the agenda is the roll call. Madam Clerk, can you do the roll call?
Student trustee Galan.
Here.
Student trustee Jordan.
Present.
Student trustee Weinstein. Trustee Handy.
Present.
Trustee Withrow.
Here.
Trustee Riley.
Present.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez-Juan. And trustee Bonilla. She's here, but she's not at her chair.
The next item on the agenda is the Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. Trustee Handy, do you have the report?
Yesterday, July 10th, 2018, recommendation to appoint Diane Chang as Associate Dean of Educational Success, Laney College, effective July 30th, 2018 through June 30th, 2020, at $106,065 annually, seven eyes. Recommendation to appoint Thomas Torres Gill as Director of International Services and Student Support District Office, effective July 11th, 2018 through June 30th, 2020, at $128,395 annually, seven eyes. Recommendation to appoint Ruby Andrews as Interim Human Resources Director District Office, effective July 11th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, at $122,813 annually, seven eyes. Recommendation to appoint Royal Roberts as Interim Director of Employee Relations and Diversity Programs District Office, effective July 11th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, at $156,307 annually, seven eyes. Recommendation to appoint LaSonia Hill as Manager of Special Projects with the Northern Alameda Adult Education Collective, effective July 11th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, at $89,319 annually, seven eyes. Recommendation to appoint Ahmed Ali as Interim Director of Fiscal Services District Office, effective July 11th, 2018 through January 31st, 2019, at $128,395 annually, seven eyes. And recommendation to appoint Victoria Menzies as Director of Business and Administrative Services, Merritt College, July 11th, 2018 through June 30th, 2020, at $128,395 annually, seven eyes.
Thank you, trustee Handy. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the modification that's listed there, which is 13.1 being removed.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any...trustee Nick?
I'd like to pull an item from the consent calendar.
Would you...to action?
Yes.
And which item?
The item is 6.2.
So that's 6.2, which is...consider approval of out-of-state travel.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to move items 9.2 and 12.11 to action. 9.2 is the ratification of a contract with Christine Williams, and 12.2 is a health contract.
So...
Health services contract.
We've got 6.2, 9.2, and what was the last one, Nikki?
12.11. 12.11. Let me just double-check, and maybe I got the number wrong. 12.11, approval of the Roots Community Health Center contract. That's already in action. Thank you very much.
And Madam Clerk, I'd also like to move item 12 point...well, I'd like to actually take that item earlier. Right, 12.3. If we could take that out of order. Move it up. Move it up so people aren't hearing it.
Okay, we'll move that item up after goodbye?
Yeah, we'll move that item up after we do our...
Okay.
And Madam Clerk, I'd like to...one more minute is to move 12.3 up to take it out of order. With those amendments, do we have a...we'll call the question? And...
I don't think we need the roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Or any abstentions? No abstentions, okay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any discussion regarding the minutes? No discussion?
Question.
We'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item is the Associate Student Government Reports. Do we have Associate Student Government Reports?
I need it. Oh, yeah. Y'all forgot, y'all put us on YouTube. Hi, my name is Yarmis Johnson. I am the 2018-19 Associate Students of Merritt College President. I'm majoring in veterinarian sciences, and I am here to support you tonight about the ASMC progression and future plans to move forward this year. What we've been doing so far, we have supported Super Saturday, that was June 2nd and 9th. We actually led part of our orientation, and we're trying to currently work with the next person who will be in charge of orientation to start currently being there more, and we're trying to make orientation more in-person instead of online, because some of our students have said that they want more in-person at this point now, because it's very...it's more interactive with them, and they get more of their questions answered. ASMC has held new and returning council members. Some summer trainings on June 8th and the 15th about Robert's Order, Brown Act, respect, tolerance, all of the great stuff you guys tell us today. And we're having more trainings. We're actually having district-wide training on August 2nd and August 3rd, if you guys want to come, show up. Okay, you guys can see us in our Feng Shui mode, working with our sister colleges. ASMC has plans that we've made so far that we want to carry out for this year. Some of those plans are like, we want to work on our vending machines, because for some reason, our vending machine people came onto our campus and kind of took them out of the S building, and we have no idea why. So that's something we want to start working on. We want to work on our fresh and natural, the cafeteria, try and get prices down with them. If we can't, then maybe, possibly get a whole new person up in there, but you know, we're going to talk to you about that later, because I know there's a whole lot of process. And we want to work on maintaining and keeping the elevators updated. The main ones is the A Building, the P Building, R Building, and S Building. Those are the buildings that a lot of our ADA students are walking through, and it kind of takes them a bit of a time to get to certain classes if they're broken down. I do know that there's some ADA students on our campus that it takes...they have to leave about an hour or two before class starts, just to get there on time, and that's kind of...I don't know, that's disrespectful to me. I ain't even ADA, so I don't know how they feel fully. We've developed plans to support with home and food securities, and did you know that 42% of our Peralta students actually have a problem with home and food insecurities? So we're trying to work on that by giving them comfort kits and resources to help support them when they leave campus. I hope you join us on our mission, and I hope you guys support us. I hope you guys stay tuned for us, and you hope to look for more details from us. I really hope that you guys are supporting us the best that you can, which I know y'all are, so I don't really have to say it, but you know it's good to say it. And ASMC has made a list of obtainable goals for 2018-19, and we look forward to sharing each and every accomplishment with you guys at each and every meeting that I can possibly come to, which I've made time for all of them, so y'all gonna see me every two weeks, okay? Okay. And I just want to say to you guys, like, thank you for your dedication, thank you for your time, thank you for your passion, thank you for resilience, just thank you for everything you guys are doing for us, for Peralta, and for anybody out there in the community that you guys are really fighting for and striving for. I really appreciate all of you guys, and I'm pretty sure ASMC does too, and so does all the faculty and administration here.
Thank you, Yarmis. Do we have any other Associate Student Government Reports? Next item on the agenda is the Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Good evening. Brandy Howard here, in place of Tim Bryce or Roberto Gonzalez. First, to our trustees, chancellor, college administrators, faculty, and students, the district-wide Classified Senate would like to take this opportunity to thank you for providing this platform for our classified employees to share our concerns as well as our accomplishments. We take our leadership role seriously, and we will demonstrate consideration for those that advocated for this seat by being present. Please accept our apology for the times we were absent from this seat. Through teamwork and true collaboration, we will take full advantage of this opportunity, and we thank you for your patience as we realign and focus our efforts. Some of the accomplishments that we have district-wide is that we've been in direct communication with our chancellor through standing monthly meetings. We've increased engagement on our PBIM committees. We've advocated for increased classified representation on hiring committees. Through the ACE Program, which was led by Dr. Mary Denise Jackson, classified employees organized a professional development assessment event, and during the event, we called on our own classified professionals to share how they moved into ideal positions which enhanced their lives individually, as well as the institution collectively. We participated on the Resource Allocation Task Force, which focuses on district-wide classified prioritized hiring, and the Resource Allocation Task Force is a subcommittee of the Planning and Budget Council. We also want to thank and highlight our college presidents, Dr. Tom Nang, Dr. Gilkerson in our absence, Dr. Burns, and Dr. Karras. I want to thank them, because all of the accomplishments that I've shared were effective because of the support of our college administrators, our Board of Trustees, and our chancellor. We've established in the year 2017-18 classified hiring prioritization lists, which included compiling and reviewing staffing requests submitted through the college's program review cycle, and prioritized staffing requests through the utilization of an approved rubric. CLA highlighted their Classified Senate through designating the month of June as Classified Employees Month, and Laney has done some awesome things in collaboration with a company called InsideTrack. They've focused on the area of student services, increased their customer service, as well as their individual skills. I want to take this time to give a special thanks to Tim Bryce, Roberto Gonzalez, Chantel Owens, our current senator...our current senate leaders, Jennifer Lenahan, Alejandra Thomas, Kai Par, Kwanah Rollins, Sean Foster, Michael Duncey, Robert Tracy, Glenn Pace, Hope Lane, Pamela Crumpton, Michael Wright, Wadua Kareem, Marji Rubrio, Walter Johnson, Doris Hansken, Merle Bull, and Ron Perez, and all supporting senators. Congratulations to our incoming union leaders. It's a new day, and Classified Senate, we are alive, we're important, and we are changing how we provide customer service toward one another as colleagues, our student body, and our surrounding community. Thank you for this opportunity to share.
The next item on the agenda is the Academic Senate Report.
Good evening, Madam President. Our trustees of Peralta Community College District, and our college administration, and faculty, and students, and staff. I would like to follow Brandy's report by just expressing my gratitude and congratulations to Tim Bryce on his retirement. His work as a colleague on many shared governance committees was fun. He was focused, he was adamant, he was an advocate, he was a strong advocate, and he was also a great colleague. So I hope that we can recognize him a little bit more formally as a district for all of his years of service, not just at Merritt College, but throughout the district. It is the summer, and so we don't have much to report from the District Academic Senate, so we have not had any District Academic Senate meetings in the past few weeks, but there are a couple of different things to share. On the 15th of August, we will be having our first annual plenary session, in which we get together the senators from all four college campuses, and really try to set ourselves up for a year of focused work and supporting each other across the district. Some of the topics that we will be discussing during that plenary session are how the Senate can facilitate student equity access and success initiatives, the District Academic Senate goals for the year, faculty representation on local district and state governance committees, and understanding and assertion of the 10-plus-one and other topics. The meeting, the plenary, will be, I think, tentatively, we're discussing changing, because as you know from your agenda, the parking at Berkeley City College, which was our first site, it is no longer available for district employees to receive their parking covered. So we're looking and considering changing the site to Merritt College, but please, in the future, board reports will let you know more specifically where the site is, and we invite you to come. This summer, actually this week, we will be sending senators and curriculum chairs to Southern California for the Curriculum Institute that is held by the statewide Academic Senate. This year's Curriculum Institute is...the theme is reimagining the student experience, and some of the breakouts that we are most specifically interested in, making sure we have some representation, so that we can bring back some of these details back to the colleges, are the UC pathways. There is currently development of UC pathways, very similar to the guaranteed transfer admission for the CSUs. The UC has reached out to the community colleges and are beginning work. And also, one of the big ones is the implementation of AB 705, which will ensure that our students are getting through the English, math, and ESL pathways much more deliberately and quickly, with strong pedagogical support and institutional support. We look forward, at the end of this summer, to working with our new VC of Student Services and our VC of Academic Affairs to review the work from this summer's pilot of Early Alert, and also looking at ways that we're going to broaden the impact of Early Alert, not just for some students, but for all of our students throughout the district. And again, going back to AB 705, we want to let you know that the English departments across the district have been meeting regularly at the end of the semester and also through the summer, talking about different ways that we're going to redesign curriculum, as well as wraparound services for our students in our English composition courses. And so currently, the four different colleges have agreed upon different steps to take towards reducing the number of levels students have to take to get through and complete their 1A requirements. And to continue that, even as we are making some cuts, we are hoping that we can really impress upon our administrators the need for embedded tutoring, the continued need for sections that may be for co-requisite courses, as well as other kinds of pedagogical and professional development support. So again, I thought this report was going to be much briefer, but I guess throughout the summer, the work of the faculty and the work of the Academic Senate continues, and we look forward to sharing more progress on even some of the developments, the unfortunate work that we're having to do with the Planning and Budgeting Committee, the council, that is continuing through the summer as well. And so hopefully, we are looking forward to the way that's been facilitated. We are encouraged by the facilitation of that, the principles that our college presidents have demonstrated, and the ways they are going about making the cuts at the colleges, and the way that we are really commending the support that we have gotten from the Finance Office, who has been really transparent and getting a lot of information to the committee, to the council, through continued requests that are constantly being made. And so we are encouraged by some of those developments, but as always, we are looking forward to even greater sense of urgency and accountability in those efforts. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, and thank you to the faculty for the extraordinary work on AB 705. The next item on the agenda is public communication, but as a point of privilege, I'd like to move up the Board of Trustee reports to allow our student trustees to make a special presentation, and that would be trustees Ayesha Jordan and Nicholas Galan with regard to the resolution for Chris Brown. Can we have the trustees come to the floor, please? All of our trustees, so we could make this presentation. If Chris Brown's family is here, could we have the family come up at this time?
So, the proclamation honoring the life of Christopher F. Brown, whereas Chris Brown was a shining star at Laney College and took classes at the other Peralta colleges. Whereas Chris Brown was a Bay Area native and a humble man who deeply loved people and writing. Whereas Chris Brown worked for the Peralta College Green Diesel Program from 2010 to 2014. Whereas Chris Brown graduated from Laney in 2016 and then worked as a tireless staff assistant. assistant for the Umoja Mbaka Student Success Community at Laney until he transferred to UC Davis in the winter quarter 2018, where he was a successful major with a strong interest in African-American studies. Whereas while Chris Brown was a student at Laney College, he was a high-achieving English major, a student government ASLC leader, a tutor at the Writing Center, a radio co-host on the Pacific radio station, and led organizer and founding member of the Laney Tech End Committee, oh, I'm sorry, Teach End Committee, became known as an expert driver and many television stations interviewed and filmed him regarding trucking incidents. Whereas Chris Brown dreamed of dedicating his life to being a voice for the voiceless, crafting his writing and his giving, and giving himself back into the Laney College community as a professor of English. Sympathies are sent to his family and friends upon his passing. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees and thanks the late Christopher F. Brown for his dedicated service to the students and mission of the Peralta Community College District.
The next item on the agenda is the public communication. Trustee Handy, do you have our public comment cards?
We're going to start with our students. Can you all come forward, please? Nicholas, It looks like Grigi, Oscar Barayo, Matthew Yun, Maria Denike, and Scott Hopkins. Could you all please come forward? And when you do come to the podium, please state your name. Come on forward, first speaker. What's your name?
Hello, my name is Nicholas Gigi.
Gigi? Okay, thank you, Nicholas.
So I'm from the aviation technical, aviation technical community, I guess, the program. And I'm in my second year. So I really enjoy it. We do a lot of hands-on stuff that you don't see a lot of in other programs. I started a little bit later, when I was 20. I should have started when I was 18, but that's just how much-
You got a little time.
Yeah. But that's just, it's just how much I enjoy it. It's just a lot of hands-on, the instructors teach you very well. They take the time out to actually show you what's going on. So when you get out there, and you also have a job just waiting for you, because there's so many mechanics retiring within the next five years, there's going to be, I think, 60,000 jobs nationwide. So we're just preparing for that, and we just really love it. Thank you.
Next speaker, can you give your name, please?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Oscar Barayo. I'm a current student of the College of Alameda Aviation Maintenance Initiative Program. So I decided to attend this program because I have a passion for airplanes ever since I was a child. I love airplane watching and just working on them. I always wondered how they fly, and I would just see big birds flying in the air. So graduated high school, I found out about this program, and I immediately decided to register. So I've been in this program for two years, as well as Nicholas. I'm done with my general classes and my airframe class, well, hopefully in two weeks. Once I finish with all my classes and my airframe, I'm deciding to, well, I'm going to take my oral practical and my written test to get my airframe license and get a job. And then, well, I'll also working to getting my power plant, my power plant, to have my A and B. Once that's done, I'm a plan, well, I'm planning to start working for a major airline such as Alaska or United, and with time, keep growing to higher positions like an aircraft inspector. I got to say about this program, it's not easy, but it's not hard. If you just really listen, pay attention, get involved when there's group projects, and just remember to always be safe. Also, we have great instructors that will help you out along the way. If you do this as a student, I'm sure you'll be successful. And top of everything, I really support this program because it gave me the opportunity to make my dreams come true, to work as, at something I love and enjoy. Thank you.
Are you Matthew Yun?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Yun, and, you know, I'm a Bay Area resident, and I'm entering my second year of aviation maintenance at College of Alameda. And I actually had gone to college for two years for computer science in Sacramento, and during those two years, I was kind of just doing the, you know, what everyone else is doing, going with the flow. And I didn't feel like I was, I belonged there. I didn't feel like I was having fun or doing something that actually mattered to me. And surprisingly enough, my dad suggested this program to me, and I was like, a little reluctant. I was unsure, is this like an industry where, you know, you're going to make a lot of money? Because, you know, money obviously interests me for my future. And I go there, and I actually really liked what I, I really liked what I saw in the tour that they gave me. And, you know, I think for anyone, you know, even if you've already finished college, or, you know, you don't know what to do, this is a field that could appeal to just about anyone who doesn't, you know, worry about getting a little dirty or, you know, doing something cool. And, you know, my overall experience of the time I've been there has been very positive. And, you know, like, I'm amazed by the stuff you can work on, the stuff we have access to, and the instructors are very, very, very helpful. You know, obviously, the class sizes are very small, and it helps you a lot. And, you know, that's pretty much what I have to offer today.
Thank you for your comments. Marisha?
Good evening. My name is Maria Denike, and I'm a student at Berkeley City College Multimedia Department. I'm here to express my concern regarding the budget cuts. This is my fourth semester at BCC, and I can say that it's definitely a safe harbor for immigrants, dreamers, and people from all aspects of life. During my time there, I met people from high school, or kids from high school, kids from foster families, people who are in their 60s and 70s. And I'm definitely amazed with instructors, their dedication, and excellent commitment to the students. So hopefully, budget cuts won't affect any program or classes and number of students. Thank you.
Are you Scott?
Hello, everyone. My name is Scott Hopkins. I'm a student at Berkeley City College in the Multimedia Department as well. And I know, there's a, I'm one of the older students that are being served. There's, like Maria said, there's high school students, a whole range of people, and it's really a great experience. BCC is a great college, all the instructors are great. And I just want to, and actually, you know, a lot of the students go, I've heard of, they go from the classes right into industry. They get jobs, they get good instruction, good preparation to go out into the world. But we do hear every semester now, it seems like, oh, they might cut this class, they might cut that class, right? It's really hard to plan an education, get your degree, if you're worried about your classes being cut. So I really strongly advocate for more and better funding for BCC and all the Peralta colleges. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to the comments from the public. You will have two minutes each. Could Dr. Mario Rivas, Jennifer Brifa, John Beam, Brock Drazen, Jennifer Shonowsky all come up to the podium, please? Come on down, folks.
Do you care what order we go in?
All right. Good evening. So I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the research I've been doing today about our budget, and sort of how it looks to me based on the numbers that have been supplied by the district to the public. So I've been looking at the 15-16 budget, and then the 18-19 budget that you all passed, the tentative version of at the last meeting. So if you look at the applicable revenue, which is the total revenue minus a few items like OPEB obligations and such, what you see is that from 15-16 to this year's tentative budget, we actually increased the amount of applicable revenue available to the district by $7.2 million. If you also look at the district's own budget books from 15-16 and compare those to 18-19, what you see is that the district office, which I'm counting as the service centers and the centralized services, so the total, you see that the district office has increased by $6.8 million. So that is approximately $14 million, right, available, right, that we're looking at. When we look at full-time academic expenditures, we see an increase of $600,000. Benefits, an increase of $3.1 million. Academic administrators, a total increase of $400,000. And part-time academic increases of $1.6 million. If you include the parcel tax, however, what you see is that the expenditures on part-time faculty have actually decreased by $2.8 million in terms of what we're budgeting. So meanwhile, we're implementing these huge cuts, right, and saying that we are, you know, need to find $7 million in our budget.
Excuse me, did someone concede their time to you?
I believe it's still ticking, so-
Okay, I just want to let you know, you have a few seconds, it's two minutes, but I was just wondering if you had more time.
Somebody might give you time. Somebody loaned you some time? No. I'm just about done. Okay. Meanwhile, we're about to hire a permanent associate, another permanent Associate Vice Chancellor of Workforce Development, despite the fact that this person, that we've had multiple interims and promises of self-sustainability and opposition from most of the constituency groups that this person represents. So I would just like to ask the board to look critically at the budget and to make sure that from now until September, we are asking the hard questions that we need to ask, and really holding everyone accountable for financial viability going forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Mario Rivas, Academic Senate President, Merritt College, Vice President of the District Academic Senate, and also member of the Peralta Association of Chicano Latinos de Aslan. And I'm going to talk briefly, I want to first of all, from the district academic senate, support the position of the CE Committee to move cautiously, not move forward adding administrators, and really bring in, as the part of the district Planning and Budget Committee, one of the principles that we came up with there is that any budget cut should come as far away from the classroom as possible in order to produce, and also to increase enrollment. That's really important. I want to talk about, I want to make my comments firmly and from a collegial perspective. I think that we need to wear shared governance as a badge of honor as a district. You as the board, and the administrators here, need to champion this. If we're going to create unity and work together, we have to have shared governance. If we make decisions that are not consistent with shared governance, it doesn't help us. It creates dissension, disunity, lack of camaraderie, and not effective ground for student learning. I want to talk about a specific collegial issue around Chicano Latinos. At Merritt, we have a strong Chicano Latino Faculty, Student, and Staff Association, Administrator Association. We wrote a resolution in the fall last year, we presented it to the department chairs, the senate, the administration, we got a position. A position, we have 32% Chicano Latinos at Merritt, we got a position. And now, this position was only posted a week ago. Now, there's question about, okay, well, this wasn't done properly. We should be working together as colleagues to help each other. If you have a college that has 32% Chicano Latinos and you get a position, everything should be done to post that position. And we shouldn't be sitting here debating with each other about the rights and wrongs, we should get things done. So shared governance is about getting things done.
Your time has ended.
Thank you very much.
Jennifer Brifa?
Yes, I'm Jennifer Brifa, thank you. Yes. So my name's Jennifer Brifa, I'm full-time faculty at Merritt College in the Child Development Department. I'm also one of the CE liaisons for Merritt College, you know, every college has one, and so we meet regularly. And I'm also a member of PACLA, the association that Dr. Rivas mentioned. And I'm here really wearing many hats, but primarily because I'm also very concerned about the effects of any cuts and any, yeah, any budget cuts to especially our Latino population, our Latinx population at Merritt and throughout the Peralta district. We have some wonderful, very successful programs at Merritt. I'm one of the people that got the non-credit programs started at Fruitvale, and we have, they're flowing out the doors, they don't even have seats sometimes, there's so many people. But I'm really concerned that with budget cuts, wonderful initiatives like that won't be able to continue because they need to be sustained. We need more of those kinds of programs. The MLAC position, we were very excited about, finally having a Mexican-Latin American Studies professor that we develop curriculum. And it really is inexcusable that we have 32% at a college without an ethnic studies department for them. I know I'm an alum of Merritt College, and when I was here, you know, fresh from having had a whole different career, starting new, taking Latin American, Mexican American Studies courses just really changed my life. It opened my mind to what was possible as a Latina and activist, and I'm really sad that here I am, you know, many, many years later as a full-time faculty, and we don't have some of these courses anymore. So those are some of the main comments I wanted to make, and I just hope our Latino students really deserve more, all our students deserve more, they deserve better, and budget cuts will affect, I think, all our students. So I'm really here to advocate for you to consider very carefully those cuts. Thank you.
John Beam?
It's tough when you've got to put glasses on to read. Trustees, chancellor, presidents, my name is John Beam, and I am the Athletic Director at Laney College, and I just wanted to share some information, I know Brock is here from Merritt, about our athletic programs in the district. I tracked all our student athletes last year at Laney, we had 208 student athletes. And when you look at the money that we generated through FTS's last year, it was a total of $2 million, so from summer, fall, and spring. $444,000 in the summer, $869 in the fall, and $741 in the spring. So our athletes are bringing in a lot of money, and they're taking all our classes. And then, we graduate them. And so we graduated, or transferred, 81% of our student athletes this past year. Last year, I came and talked to you, and we did 89%. And the ones that aren't- in the district. I tracked all our student athletes last year at Laney, we had 208 student athletes. And when you look at the money that we generated through FTS's last year, it was a total of $2 million. So from summer, fall, and spring, $444,000 in the summer, $869 in the fall, and $741 in the spring. So our athletes are bringing in a lot of money and they're taking all our classes. And then we graduate them. And so we graduated, or transferred 81% of our student athletes this past year. Last year, I came and talked to you, and we did 89%. And the ones that aren't graduating are still in school trying to finish up their A degrees so they can transfer. I talked to you the last time I came about hope and opportunity, and I brought some students with us. And that's what we do at Peralta, we create those opportunities for people. And when we do that, there's a cost. We bring in money, there's a cost. And when we look at discretionary funding and we look at it, it's changing it. When we look at level playing field, right, the state has given us a chance to level the playing field. It has a, there's a new standard in accreditation, which is Standard 2C4, that talks about athletic programs now making sure that they are fully funded for the necessities of the sport, whatever that is. I can tell you that in my 14 years at Laney College, we, Laney has never bought a football uniform or a baseball uniform. Right now, currently, as I talk with our administration, and they're giving me a tentative budget, right off the top, we're short $33,000 in that tentative budget for stipends, stipends that are protected by PFT. When you look at it, you also give us food. The board has given us a food policy of $10 for breakfast, $13 for lunch, $15 for dinner, and we're traveling as a football team that we don't pick, it was given as we're going to go to Quincy, which is a five-hour drive. And my total budget for the football season for food is $4,000. That trip alone is $3,500. So the answer is, well, you're going to have to fundraise. Well, when does a student have a chance to fundraise? They put in 20-plus hours on, in the sport, they're taking 15, actually, most of them are taking about 17 units. When can they go out and help bring money in for things that are the best, basic necessities of what we're doing here? And we're generating $2 million. I'm sure Merritt and Alameda are doing the same. I want to bring that to your attention. You know, we look at it, we don't have money for supplies. $26,000 is what we budgeted for, but we're given 18. And it goes on. But I think it's not, we're not looking at a lot. But when I bring this up to our administration, they hear me, but they have cuts. And I go, I point out DVC, Chabot, San Francisco City, LMC, CSM, all the schools that we recruit against are fully funded. How does it look when I tell a student athlete they're going to have to go raise money so we can feed them? They're trying to raise money to get here on board every day. So I just want to let you know that. I'm not sure that, you know, you see the big picture, but I wanted to give you the spotlight of what we do here. Thank you very much. And I also want to say that this board and this community has always supported athletics here. Every bond measure's passed, our facilities are top flight. It has definitely been a plus for us. That field is level. But this field right now, this budget is not level. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Yes? Can I have Janelle Keen, Esther Chang, Kimberly King, Corey Hollis, and Richard Thole? Please line up. Thank you.
Good evening, chancellor, trustees, and presidents. I am full-time faculty in the Kinesiology Department at Merritt College. I am the head track and field coach, and I'm the new athletic director at Merritt, just starting my third week. So perhaps I can't be as specific with the dollar amounts as Coach Beam. But I do want to say that our administration is very supportive of athletics and understands our value. Coaches are on the front lines, we recruit in the community, we provide wraparound support in financial aid, counseling, registration, retention, graduation, and transfer of our students. We need budget support, not cuts, and we earn the right by bringing in traditionally underserved, underrepresented students and changing lives. My initial goals as the athletic director will be to establish and meet yearly FTES goals and quantify recruiting, retention, and graduation and transfer rates, as I've done in track and field for the last 13 years. So that as an athletics program, we can empirically show what we bring to our institution and how deserving we are of budget dollars and not cuts. We want the cuts to be made as far away from the classroom as possible for our student success. Thank you very much.
Janelle, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is one of my first times coming to a meeting like this. And I was a student at College of Alameda, and I've been there for several years trying to get out. And I thought it was just my fault. But recently, I decided to just, I accidentally went on the Google, Peralta Colleges, and that's why I'm here today, because I saw people standing in front of the schools with suits on, looking real nice. And it almost felt sick because I'm like, behind those suits are a lot of people who commit suicides and go to crime and stuck in domestic violent relationships because they thought the only way out was through their education. And I was one of those people. And I just, it hurt me so bad, I didn't want to come here, but I learned a lot by just sitting here. I had a lot to say, but I don't really have anything to say now. I don't think it's even worth, I don't think it's even worth, but me even saying it now, because there's so many more problems and cuts that I, actually, I'm speechless. I don't know why I'm even here. But I am here because my son is 20, he was an A student too, he's an honor roll student, very smart like me. And he said, I'm going to take care of you, don't worry about them, I'm, I got you. And same thing happened to him, no support, everything cut. And he ended up having a nervous breakdown like I did. And I know people who jumped off buildings, I know people who sell dope, I know women stuck in horrible situations because they can't make no money. And I have 90 units, and nobody's called me, nobody's sent me a letter, nobody even did outreach. And I, and if there is one, somebody called and left me a message and said, there is outreach, which I didn't even call her back because I was like, nobody reached me or my son. So I don't want to hear that lady, I don't know who it was, I didn't even bother to call back. But I have a few minutes left, I had a whole bunch to say. I see we only get two minutes. This is my first time ever being here, and I heard a lot. And I came because I thought I could make something happen, but I see we, we in deeper mess than what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Esther Chang?
Good evening, chancellor, trustee. My name is Esther Chang. I am the College of Alameda AMT Campus Supervisor. I'm here on behalf of our AMT Department and our department chair, Mr. Cole. He wanted to be here, but he needed to teach. Aviation professional and mechanic are in high demand right now. Our students have 100% rate after their FAA certification. Industry recruiter have come to us to recruit our students for potential hire before they even graduate. FH's starting salary is $55,000 plus with full benefit, and it will be increased to $85,000 after a few years. We work closely with high school, state university, to create a pathway to higher, higher education. We also work closely with the industry, such as Alaska Airlines, Delta Airlines, United Airlines, Panasonic, Bay Area Railroad Transit, to give our students a firsthand experience and job placement. We have an ongoing waiting list for our class. Additional funding will allow us to hire more teachers, to teach professional, to meet our demand. Our building is over 45 years older than me, with many things not up to code, including ADA compliant. We have toilet that is not working. We have roof that is raining. So we have to have the student getting a bucket on each table to make sure that it's not, you know, getting more damage. That's how bad our campus is. We are, we are really pleased to receive our graduated student who sent us thank you card or email, tell us how excited about their new job and their future. And also thanks, College of Alameda gave them an opportunity to attend AMT program. Within a short two-year, they gained a professional trade skill.
Ms. Chang, you're going to need to wrap up, your time is up.
Yes, a trade skill to earn a good income, to support their family. Like our AMT slogan, sky is our limit. Thank you for your time.
Kimberly King. Next is Corey Hollis, then Richard Thole, and then maybe we have John, I'm sorry, I can't, H U L, I can't make up the letters, but I'm sure you're, okay, Joe Doyle, Stephen Coe, and Andreas. Can you all line up next behind them? Thank you. Ms. King, you have two minutes?
I'd like to thank the chancellor and the board of trustees for giving that proclamation to Christopher Brown. He worked in my office, and he was a wonderful, wonderful young man. So thank you for that. But I'm also here to talk about the budget cuts. As you know, our colleges are being told to cut huge amounts of spending and to freeze faculty and staff hiring. I urge the board members to please work with the chancellor and other Peralta district leaders to keep the cuts as far away from students as possible. If there's ways to cut spending at the district for travel and consultants, that would hurt students far less than cutting classes and cutting the direct services. The vice president from my campus has made a cut of 30% in her office alone to try to protect student services, I mean, direct student services. And I really just urge everyone to try to do that, something like that. I also wanted to say that problems of inadequate funding and declining services have been here long before the chancellor, current chancellor has been here. This is an ongoing problem, and it's a crisis around the country. But here we are, and you all are the elected folks to steward our college through this time. And we need you to find more funding for our colleges. It's just completely inadequate, what the last young woman was talking about with, we have way worse problems unfortunately at Laney. So unfortunately, our elected officials don't tax the wealthy corporations in the Bay Area that could easily fund our programs here. The problem goes all the way to the governor of our state, who is keeping a $9 billion reserve for a so-called rainy day. We're in a rainy day in the Peralta system right now, and it's rainy days going around throughout our state. So I just urge you to do whatever you can to encourage our state officials to actually do their job and fund education, and in the meantime, keep the cuts away from our students. Thank you.
Corey Hollis?
Good evening, board, administration, faculty, staff, students, and public. All right? My name is Corey Hollis, a staff assistant with the Distance Education Department at Peralta District. I come before you today to address an issue concerning a resource department for Peralta District students, normally referred to as Disabled Students' Services and Programs, DSPS. The issue with this resource is in the word disabled, specifically the prefix, this, one of the meanings being a lack of, a lack of ability. First, I will mention, this word does not describe the population it serves. And for the person that hears with their eyes or sees with their ears would tell you the same. It's not a lack of ability, it's a difference in ability. And a student requesting these services is not seeking help for what they lack. They're seeking equity for their ability, right? With this said, I would like to highlight Merritt College for changing the name of the Resource to Student Accessibility Services, SAS. And my suggestion is for Peralta District and the other three colleges, Laney, Berkeley City, and Alameda, to follow Merritt College's example. My ultimate concern is for students to feel welcome as they are. I know this issue may seem small, but what you call someone can have a serious effect on how that person perceives themselves. And you don't have to look very far through history, or better yet, current events, to find examples of this, right? So with that, I thank you for listening and enjoy the rest of your meeting. See.
Richard? Are you Richard?
John Holmes.
John?
Is there Richard in front of me?
John, go ahead. John, what's your last name?
Holmes. And I apologize for my dreadful handwriting.
That's you, okay.
Right. And I teach history at Merritt College, and I'd like to say a little something about the history program at Merritt, or almost a lack thereof. I've only been teaching there about a year now. And as of last spring, there were, to my knowledge, three history classes at Merritt College, two of which I was teaching, and the third being taught by a brand-new hire, who got hired this spring. And this is in a situation, I tell my students, they tend to, and a lot of them agree, that history is the most important thing that you can learn in the Peralta system. Why is that? Our classes are all American history. If you want to understand America, if you want to understand the world, you have to understand the history. If you want to be a citizen of America and understand the country you're living in, you have to understand American history. And if you want to citizen the world, you have to understand the history of the world. And I think my students are aware, I think probably everyone in this room is aware, that there's a lot of things wrong in America and in the world, and something needs to be done about them. And if you want to be a part of the process of improving the future of America and the world, you have to understand the history. There's a famous statement, which I put on all my syllabi, which is, that those who do not understand history will even tend to repeat it. So there's nothing, in my opinion, more important than learning history. And we have hardly a history program at Merritt College, and we're talking about budget cuts. And I also have to mention, although we're talking about a staff freeze, at the beginning of this meeting, I heard rattle off something like about half dozen to a dozen appointments of administrators over, usually over $100K each. That sounds like a million dollars dropped out of the budget right there, according to my math. So I think there's some serious concern here. Now, I'm a, I'm a part-timer. There are no full-time history instructors at Merritt College, zero. And one thing I've heard is, one solution is found is, don't hire full-timers, just hire us part-timers. Well, of course, being a part-timer myself, I can see a certain advantage of that.
Your time is up, so you need to wrap up, sir.
When you have a situation where huge numbers of part-timers cannot afford medical coverage, how can they perform services for their students if they're sick and they don't have medical coverage? Something has to be done. And there are countless numbers who have serious, there are even instructors, in the part-time instructors of the Peralta system, who are homeless. Something has to be done about that. If you're going to rely on part-timers, you got to treat them a little better, pay them a little better, and give them some medical coverage.
Thank you for your comments. Joe Doyle?
Hi, my name is Joe Doyle. I'm from Berkeley City College, the multimedia department. I teach digital imaging. Chancellor, trustees, the presidents, and students and faculty, and the public at large. I'm here with the good news. Part of the mission of Peralta is cultural outreach to the community. And to that effect, many of you have a card on your desk or got an email from me last week inviting you to an art show at the San Francisco Public Library, The Gravity of Today, Vision of Tomorrow, starting July 14 through October 21, at the San Francisco Public Library. It's a beautiful building. Now, this was done at no expense to Peralta. This was done through the Berkeley City College Digital Artists Collective, which is a student association and is dedicated to professionalism in the arts. We had the students themselves donated their artwork to the show. The frames were from Michael's Art Supply, and there's a little one here, I can't read it, Friends of the Earth or somebody also helped. Now, I'm asking for your help to let us continue our mission, our community outreach. And this is how we do it. We can engage the community through shows like this. Go to the show, bring your friends. Incidentally, Jerry Brown is hosting a ecology conference in San Francisco later in the summer, and I understand there will be events at the gallery in association with that. So my message to you is you can support us best by keeping cuts away from the classroom. Thank you.
Okay, is Richard Thole, T-H-O-E-L-E, in the audience? No. Okay, I've asked for, you are Richard?
Yes.
And I've asked for Stephen Coe, Andreas Culver, Andreas, you didn't put it in the card, someone put it in for you, Wendy Beldon, and E.L., it looks like E.L.A.E.N.E. Wallace. Could you all please line up? Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Richard Thole, and I just want to introduce myself as the new SCIU 1021 Chapter President here at Peralta Colleges, representing all classified staff. And so I just want to say hi. And then- And then I just want to touch base on the bond measure or the parcel tax that's being discussed right now. And I would just like the, I don't like the fact that it seems like a rushed, a rushed item. I've been participating in some of the meetings, at least sitting in and listening, and it seems the information is very jumbled. It seems, it's hard to make an accurate decision when some of the information being presented is not accurate itself. And I've seen that over and over in the district, in the different committees that I've been sitting on even before my current role. It's very confusing, and I was surprised to see how confusing the information just being presented to staff so we can make informed decisions, how confusing it can be. So how can we possibly even make the best decision that we can for the district? So that's one topic. But I'm really here just to ask for the, for the board to consider, thinking about, you know, the parcel tax being put on in the mid-election cycle or something, not on the November cycle, and for many reasons. I think we have a Republican and Democratic governor race that's coming out, and I don't think it's a smart idea to put the parcel tax with the same election when we potentially have a big Republican turnout. And this could potentially put the parcel tax in jeopardy as it requires a two-thirds vote. So it may not be the right move. I think if we, if we do it right, we get the language correct, we get all our shared governance members to be participating, and it be an inclusive opportunity, I think it, you know, it's a good idea to kind of not rush this process and perhaps put it through in a mid-election cycle. And that, that could, that wouldn't necessarily affect us from losing the funding that we, that we will need at the end of this current.
Your time is up, thank you.
So I would like you to please consider that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, may I have your name, please?
Wendy Beldon.
Okay, Wendy.
Chancellor, trustees, my name is Wendy Beldon, and I teach ESL at Merritt Fruitvale. I could talk to you about what uncertainty does for our department, but I wanted to talk to you about some of the students I've had and what cuts and uncertainty does to them. My students are home caregivers, they work multiple jobs, they're former farm workers, they're restaurant workers. Their learning has been interrupted by war and migration. And I'm sure you know, there's a lot of fear and stress for them in their lives. These are our immigrant students. Our state economy depends on them, and indeed, the American economy, the growth of the American economy depends upon them. They ask a lot of questions that I can't answer about their futures in the U.S. The one thing I would like to give them in answer to the question, "Will there be classes for me next semester?" is yes, yes, there will be. I'll be here for you, and there will be a path forward for you here. And you know, enrollment is a problem in certain classes in my department, but there needs to be a concerted and organized effort to market these classes. And we need to invest in our immigrant students, and the way to do that is to market our classes. So please, I ask of you to keep the budget cuts as far away from these students as you can. I'm going to just leave you with one story about one student who told me, "Teacher, every minute is precious to me here at school. I picked tomatoes for 40 years in the fields." I ask you to keep these cuts away from these students. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Elaine? Are you Elaine?
I'm Elaine.
Okay.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I don't want to leave anybody out. My name is Elaine Wallace. I'm a retired lieutenant with the California Highway Patrol, 27 years of service to the citizens of California, and it was a pleasure. I'm currently an administration of justice teacher at Merritt College, and I'm here to talk about a public safety training center proposal for, to put on the bond measure. I have a Oakland, we currently have Oakland Police Department and Oakland Fire at Merritt College. We have a fire academy, and we also have a police academy that we are partnershiped with. Our current police academy generates FTESs at, according to approximately a million dollars every 18 months. This partnership, we want to expand it, and we would like to invest in a public safety center because OPD and Oakland Fire Department are losing their training facilities. Currently, OPD does not have a firing range. We need a new training facility. These can be state-of-the-art. It will encourage collaboration between OPD and OFD and other agencies, help OPD recruit new hires, help connect Oakland residents to high-paying public safety careers, offer emergency preparedness training to the community members, facilitate long-term academic growth for public safety professionals. Ooh, I'm running out of time, hold on. I feel like I'm in court, I just wanted to say that. The existing partnership between Peralta College District and the Oakland Fire Departments has created a foundation to build a regional public safety training center, which could provide training for the Oakland Fire Academy, the Oakland Police Academy, advanced police and fire training, administration of justice courses, emergency medical technicians and paramedics, private security, port security, homeland security, rural security, citizen involvement in community policing and crime prevention, and citizen involvement in emergency preparedness and response. Phew. Thank you.
Hi, Andreas Culver, just to clarify that I actually signed up for item 12.3. I know you called my name a couple of times, so, and I'll wait my turn then. Okay.
Is Stephen Coe here?
Maybe it's in the spell, is it Corlett in red? Is it written in red?
It says Stephen C.
For item 12.3?
Red.
That's me, sorry. I was in a hurry. I'm Stephen Corlett, chemistry faculty, chair of the department, and co-chair of the Facilities Committee at Laney College. And I have a statement, just, I'll read my statement. Whereas all four colleges in the district are in urgent need for revitalization of their facilities, it's clear that probably the only way to achieve this is through a bond measure. The state will not have enough of what we need. A year ago, we set out to update all facilities, technology master plans, and we understood that they needed to be essentially complete by the time we were ready for this November election. At Laney, we understood that the final FTMP would guide what types of requests would be made in an upcoming bond measure. However, it was soon clear that the vision presented in the final TMP was actually a 20-year plan, and that there is simply too much for one single bond measure to cover. At Laney, we would need to start with a single bond measure for the highest priority projects such as infrastructure, library, student center, science building, then if successfully implemented, seek an additional bond to work our way down the list. At each stage, we envision making choices on the campus priorities using a shared governance approach and in direct consultation with the district. At Laney, over the last academic year, during the FTMP update, we spent considerable efforts at narrowing down our campus priorities for a potential upcoming bond measure, again, using a shared governance approach. We already shared our results for this spring with the chancellor and the district, and therein the email that I sent all of you last night, and I think you also have a copy on your desk. In order to bring our campus, all campuses, up to modern functional standards that will maximize student success, our only hope is that our concerted efforts between the campuses and the district are strategic and focused on the most immediate and reasonably achievable needs in the relative short term of an upcoming bond. The bond language presented at this board meeting simply has too much included for the dollar amount of the bond asked for. It seems that with no collaboration, consultation with campuses, at least with Laney, this leads to too many projects to be accomplished with only $800 million. Where Laney spends hours developing and prioritizing facilities, the first draft of this bond was only available June 22nd. The majority of shared governance bodies were unavailable to review. The second draft only appears now in front of you. So in line with our intentions from this spring, the Laney FPFC and administration suggest that we reduce the number of items.
Your time is up.
One more thing, please, some.
Sorry, your time is up.
In the district administration are too many, we ask if you reduce the number so that the bond might pass. Thank you.
That concludes the items from the public.
The next item on the agenda is the chancellor's report.
Members of the board, I would like to cede my time tonight to Roberto Gonzalez, who made extra effort to be here tonight. He is the interim or acting president of the Classified Senate. Roberto.
Thank you very much, chancellor. I really appreciate this opportunity, especially in light of tonight's activities. Good evening, board of trustees, faculty, administrators, students, and a hearty thank you again to Chancellor Legere. Tonight will be my last night addressing the board in the capacity, at least as the interim president of the Peralta Classified Senate. It's not interim if, if it doesn't end and if I keep doing it. And so due to other obligations and interests and endeavors, I have officially resigned my post. As I reflect back on several years of senate roles as college senate president and VP, Peralta senate VP, and in this kind of longstanding interim senate president, it is a bittersweet thing for me to step away. I'm appreciative that come tomorrow morning, that I no longer will bear the responsibility to organize senate activities, and yet somewhat acrimonious in the sense that there is obviously unfinished work to be done. But there will always be work to be done. I'd like to just keep this brief, but to allow me to make just some parting observations and perhaps recommendations on behalf of the Peralta Classified Senate. First, especially in the light of unfavorable fiscal climate that we're experiencing, I believe that it is crucial that we keep in mind that it is absolutely necessary to hire smart and to work smart. We should not let our egos and limitations get in the way of our decision-making, simply for the sake of making an easy decision. As educators, whether in the classroom, behind an office door, in the hallway, or even in the parking lot, we have an obligation to do as much as we can to foster the success of our students today in preparations for our citizens of tomorrow. The gentleman in the White House that is masquerading as our president is no friend to you or I, or to our colleagues, or any of our students. And so we must take it upon ourselves to go high and to stay high, to create and maintain an institution of excellence, to acknowledge our shortcomings, and to emphasize our strengths so as to avoid slipping into the abyss of mediocrity, or worse yet. We will have a tremendous amount, or we do have a tremendous amount of talent throughout Peralta. Much of yet is still untapped or underutilized. And so, we do have a lot of work, but I will be still around. I will be serving actually as the, the publicist for the Peralta chapter of SEIU Local 1021. So I do fully expect to be present here, to at times make public comments, but just in a different capacity, I'm looking to serve our members as well as to look out for our students for, for the bigger picture. I'd like to thank all of you for your attention and your support throughout these years. It's been a real pleasure being here, and I look forward to many more years of service at Peralta, but in a different capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. The next item on the agenda is the, is the presentations, the Citizens Oversight Committee report for the parcel tax.
I'm trying to understand how this is not a document from the Citizens Oversight Committee. It states here that he is not speaking on their behalf, he's speaking on his own regards. So wouldn't that be appropriate in comments from the public, since he is stating here that he is not representing the Citizens Oversight Committee in this? I'm just, I'm just looking at protocols and, I just don't understand this.
We've approved the agenda with the presentation. So what I would like to do is continue with the 4.1, and if there's some adjustment regarding, we actually should get the presentations ahead of time so we can clarify any agenda issues, but Mr. Mills, if you would continue. Mr. Mills, if you would continue.
Members of the board of trustees, everyone here elsewhere. Over here? Over there. Members of the board of trustees, and everyone here and elsewhere, I'm Michael Mills, chairperson of the Citizens Oversight Committee, or COC. Since I've not run this particular text past the COC directly, I will be speaking primarily for myself. Regardless, over the past three years, you've noticed that the COC has been steadfast in its demands that the district alter its ways and revert to a clear interpretation of the 2012 parcel tax ballot measure. First off, I'm extending a formal invitation to the trustees to attend the next and all subsequent COC meetings. You have fiduciary responsibility for the use of the monies in these measures as well as the general fund. You should exercise the opportunity to inform yourselves. Attendance at the COC meetings is guaranteed to provide you with updates and heaps of information on both measures. Simply send the chair an email to ensure that no more than three trustees attend at any one time. First come, first served. All COC meetings are open to the public, are informative and productive, and will assist you in your efforts to represent students. Secondly, rumor contends that the COC is highly political. If those rumor mongers believe that the COC colludes with the Russians, or with any political Peralta constituent body to plot actions of any sort, then sorry, that's a fake rumor. On the other hand, the COC does agitate on behalf of those who like the language of the 2012 measure and truly believe that students would be the recipients of the 8 million annually coming to the district from taxpayer pocketbooks. The CODC does disseminate information to the PFT and similar entities. It also sends exactly the same information to all the trustees, the college presidents, the League of Women Voters, various interested parties, and to various newspapers. What the recipients do with that information is their call. Accurate information is the essential element. For the first two years, parcel tax usage was transparent and well documented. Classes were created and their relative costs were there for the viewing. Starting in 2015, usage became murky. An audit, an audit said that expenditures were appropriate. The same audit acknowledged that academic endeavors were reduced by nearly 75%, and classified expenditures consumed nearly 80% of parcel tax revenues. One supposes you can call those expenditures appropriate. Trustees, try telling that to taxpayers and students. The district was also relatively silent as to how students benefited from this annual infusion of 8 million dollars of free money. Two budget years remain from the 2012 measure. By now- By now, you realize there can be a considerable variance between the preliminary budget for the fiscal year and the actual ending expenditures. Hopefully, you are paying careful attention to year-end figures. Did those revenues actually go towards ballot language endeavors? If not, where did the money go? Invoke the great phrase, "Follow the money." Before you now is an extension of the parcel tax, an effort to persuade voters to keep assessing themselves $48 per parcel annually from 2020 to 2028. Also before you is a recent piece in the Mercury News as an estimated budget deficit of 7.3 million necessitating cuts of varying sorts. How this fiscal dilemma gets resolved is the concern of the board of trustees. You, after all, approve the appointment of the chancellor and all administrators. All that happens is on your watch. The COC is not a party to any of these discussions. The COC does insist on insurance, assurance, from the district that not a single penny from parcel tax monies is used to address the district's extreme fiscal woes in any fashion whatsoever. In the 2012 election, the former Oakland Tribune and the East Bay Express endorsed the measure, albeit with conditions. Only the Alameda Greens withheld support stating, quote, "The trustees have once again submitted a ballot measure lacking in specifics." The proposed extension before you under the, quote, "Internal Planning and Accountability Clause" does envision a planning process of sorts involving sectors coming together to develop two-year plans. The specific purpose paragraph limits the use of the monies. Those proposed clauses pose at least three questions. How can specific expenditure plans be developed in short order when for the past three years the constituents have been at bitter odds over efforts to direct the monies? Number two, how can the district resolve their critical fiscal issues without casting an eye towards the annual eight million infusion? Number three, who is capable of stopping an administration from dipping into the eight million if only for loaning purposes with intent to pay back in some enforcement? Instead of approving this extension tonight, I suggest that you vote to postpone this measure until the 2020 ballot. After all, the 2012 measure and this cast infusion does not expire until June of 2020. The worst that can happen from postponement is for the district to prepare for a short-term shortfall in the last segment of the 2020 fiscal year. Two years' notice should give the district ample planning time. The postponement allows for the constituents to utilize the coming two budget years to experiment with their expenditure plans for each of those two years, considered to be an equivalent of a test drive. If they succeed in this joint effort, then the future for the 2020 vote bodes well and will generate internal confidence and satisfaction. On the other hand, if the next two years prove to be as arbitrary and as ill-directed as the past three years, then you have proof positive that other steps need to be taken. Put all parties on notice that the postponement gives them two years to prove that the project can be done and they can work together. You trustees could also chafe at the short notice. Months ago, the COC asked the district to supply it with the ballot language for both measures. Nothing was delivered. Only within the last month, factored about June 5, has the ballot language been drafted and the constituents convened for the dialogue. Full disclosure, I was involved in some of the developing of the ballot language. There are three clauses in the ballot language that in fact are coming from me and I'm still asking for postponement. Now, you, the trustees, only have a few days to review and approve what should have been part of a constant dialogue and update over several months. A postponement vote would send a clear message. Keep the board informed on a regular basis. If the board does vote to proceed, there is likely to be a counterargument on the ballot citing now actual usage was anything but appropriate and benefits to students were difficult to identify. Other points will be included. Then, there's also the matter of the construction bond proposal. The COC has yet to see the language. Because we are stumbling in the dark, we can only ask a couple of questions. One, were all constituent bodies involved in the compilation? Two, who is targeted to oversee the projects? Three, are the projects and their costs specifically listed? Four, why is the board given less than a week to examine, question, and vote on what should have been an ongoing informative process? In addition to reporting on the fiscal crisis, the Mercury News of July 8 cited a 2015 Solano Grand Jury Report that cited the then administration on a number of bases. The article might seem as an alert to Peralta trustees to avoid, quote from the article, misleading and contradictory, close quote, language, and to insist on specific projects and their costs. No entity wishes to have a grand jury looking over its shoulders. Summation. Number one, please vote to postpone the parcel tax until 2020 and watch how the test drive pans out. Number two, construction bond measure. Good luck on that one, but please concentrate on the exact projects, their specifics, and their costs. Lastly, at the next COC meeting, I will be tendering my resignation both as chair and as member. Three years plus 38 in the district, sufficient. Again, trustees are welcome to attend the meeting and say goodbye to me. Thank you. By the way, in response to trustee Handy's comment...
I have a Brown Act rule that doesn't have a back and forth, so that's why I just asked you to continue. But, we don't have a back and forth, Mr. Mills, with regard to the agenda.
I'm a bit confused, excuse me.
You wish to comment on trustee Handy's statement, and I'm asking that we stick to the agenda rather than have a back and forth.
Oh, I was just... Okay, I was just going to simply say about the COC, actually, I see that I was doing this and they said, "Go ahead and do it. You've got our support."
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
I'm open for questions.
The next item...
I think on presentations, there can be questions if I'm not mistaken.
Sure, if anybody has questions. Oh, we do have a question.
First of all, Michael, I'd like to thank you for your service.
I love this district.
What you've been doing for your entire life has really benefited us and that you generously gave of your time in retirement was above and beyond. So, thank you for those three years.
Appreciate it.
I also really appreciate the critical questions you've been raising over the last year. And the, I guess, we've got this thing we're voting on tonight. We're being asked to vote on it tonight and I guess a basic question that I have for you about the information that the Citizens Oversight Committee has been provided with. At this point, do you feel as though you have a good handle on the actual expenditures on parcel tax? You've been given some figures. Do you have confidence in those figures? Do you have confidence in the way that the expenditures have or have not met the spirit of, the language, and how they benefited the students who were the intended beneficiaries?
I can't specifically answer that question directly now, but I will say that Vice Chancellor Finance Johnson has been doing a very good job of supplying information as of the most recent moment. It's just we haven't had a meeting to get a complete update. But, the last issuance from Vice Chancellor Johnson was very good and gave us an idea that some changes appear to be in the works.
Mr. Mills, thank you very much for your presentation and thank you very much for your service. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing, which is 5.1, Public Hearing to Discuss Placement of a Special Tax... Oh, actually, the Madam Clerk has given us a clarification to read regarding the agenda. Trustee Handy, can you read that?
Agenda item 13.1, Enrollment Fee Revenue Report was removed from the agenda and will return to the September 11th board meeting.
We have one, I believe, trustee Handy, that you have a modification to the agenda and you'll have to say what it is and we'll make a vote on that. Okay, so we're good. Okay, all right, we're good. All right, so then...
So, we're making a motion?
No, that was already, that was already there. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. It's Public Hearing to Discuss Placement of a Special Tax on the November ballot. The presenter is Chancellor Legere. I'm going to gavel in the public hearing at 8:37 PM. We are now opening the public hearing regarding item 5.1 on the agenda, which is Placement of a Special Tax on the November ballot. Chancellor?
We brought this item so that public hearing could be held on it. As you've heard several times, the current parcel tax is due to expire on June 30, 2020. The reason why we feel that this is an appropriate time to bring this measure forward for consideration by the board is that it would give us time to plan for our budget properly. Furthermore, as you have heard, we spent some time over the past couple of weeks with our presidents as well as other members of shared governance and unions, looking at different ways to implement the new measure. Of course, the new measure would not be applicable until July 1, 2020, which means that we do have time to develop one policy that the group has decided, as well as the different plans that the group suggested that we have. And we certainly will use the current measure as well to start working on those plans. I think with a plan in place, there is a lot of accountability that the measure talks about. Not only do we intend to have a policy of the board for this matter, but also we have put it in the language, in the document for approval, which makes it mandatory that the board or future administrators and the shared governance process really adhere to the language. So, with that, I would like to ask the board to continue the public hearing and also to take action on the item today.
Thank you very much, chancellor. We are continuing the public hearing. Does anyone have any questions regarding item 5.1? Trustee Weinstein?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is the time or actually later when it comes in, later in the agenda, but is there a possibility to have the discussion of the parcel tax and the bond tax at the next meeting because we've really only had four days to look at the wording, that the board only had four days to look at the wording? Is that a possibility?
I believe you're directing, are you directing that to the chancellor? I mean, I'm not going to put on my lawyer hat right now because it's important. I will direct that to the chancellor and he can direct that to the board.
The next meeting is slated to be a retreat of the board and also we do need to start working if we're moving forward with the measure. If, of course, there are questions, we have plenty of resources here to be able to answer questions that members of the board may have on the resolution.
So, I would like to move it so that it's discussed either at the next meeting or before the next meeting. I don't think we've had adequate time. I'd be glad to ask questions, but I don't think we've had adequate time to discuss this as a board.
So, are you making a motion, trustee Weinstein? That would actually be when we would call the item for vote?
Okay, that's what I was bringing up.
Right.
Okay.
I understand your question now.
Okay.
I have a question, chancellor. Could you give us some background on the process that preceded item 5.1 on the agenda?
As you know, this measure is an extension of one that already exists. And so, because we're not asking for anything different from the voters, we use some time to go over the language with some members of our constituents. And there was plenty of time. We thought we'd have one meeting. It led to three instead of one and really there was a lot of ownership taken in terms of coming up with the accountability language as well as modifying briefly the language for the ballot, which was a lot bit hard itself since the ballot language is limited to 75 words. But, in terms of document, that backup document for the ballot language, we did spend some time really looking at what would be the best way for us to make sure that the coming measure would have as much accountability in it as necessary.
And I have just one additional question. I believe trustee Nikki is your hand up. What is the fiscal impact to our students if we don't have this ballot measure successfully passed?
The impact is an eight million dollar hole in our budget, so I think it would have a direct impact on being able to teach some classes as well as being able to provide instructional support to our students. And instructional support is extremely critical, especially for the population of students that we have. Being able to provide tutoring, for example, which has been added to the language is something that's really, really critical for our students. So, it means that the level of success that we now experience would probably, would be in jeopardy if we do not pass the measure.
Thank you, chancellor. Trustee Gonzalez, you're in.
Thank you very much. Chancellor, you're probably aware there was an article in the East Bay Times this past week on the budget crisis that we're experiencing right now. And in that article, there was some discussion of the parcel tax itself. And in that article, I believe you were quoted, and I just wanted to see whether the quote's accurate because you never know whether newspaper reports are accurate, but you were quoted as saying something along the lines of, "The parcel tax is used the way it should be used." And if, in fact, that's an accurate reflection of your perspective, I'm wondering whether you believe that, in fact, there's change that is called for because what I'm hearing you say is, "Moving forward, we are going to change what we are doing." But, what I'm reading in this article, which again, I don't have any idea whether it's accurate, what I'm hearing from your statement in the article is, "Everything's okay, really. We're good." And so, I'm just wondering whether there's a conflict in your perspective, whether you changed your mind, whether the reporting was inaccurate. Thoughts?
Yeah, I know about all the questions, but certainly, I have been on record saying that we conducted an audit of the expenditures that have occurred for the parcel tax. And the audit revealed that we are, to a high percentage, accurate in the expenditures that have happened. The small percentage was something that we corrected immediately. So, based on third-party investigation of the audit, we certainly have used the... So based on third-party investigation of the audit, we certainly have used the parcel tax funds the way that we should. Now, I was the first one who brought to the Board's attention the fact that we were spending less funds on instruction than we should have. That is because, as with all my experience in higher education, anytime you have a budget where you spend less on instruction, you're going to get questioned. And the way that it was, it was being reported, the percentage was increasingly less on instruction. However, there was nothing outside of the language of the ballot that was done, that was improper in the spending, except for, again, what the audit revealed and which we took care of. The, if you look at our budget, we spend, when we budget the funds, we do budget them so that they go to instruction, as well as to student services. So we have certainly followed the letter of the measure. And of course, we need to make sure that we spend more on instruction. That's normal for us to do that. But in terms of following what the measure said that we need to follow, of course, we did.
So legal, but not necessarily appropriate?
Appropriate and legal. Again, I will repeat, anytime you spend more funds or less funds on instruction, you are going to get crucified. That's just the way that our education system works. And it's normal, you know, for us to do that. But it's something that we, you know, we have corrected and that we continue to really make progress on.
Well, if I can just follow on that. You're saying that we get crucified if we spend less money on instruction, and yet we have spent less money on instruction. Is it your position that we, that the crucifixion, as it were, is inappropriate, that it's uncalled for, or in fact, that we should, in fact, really be spending less money, more money on instruction, and that the criticisms are appropriate? Those are two different positions.
Chancellor and Trustee Nikki, I'll ask you guys to make this your last question. These appear to be a personal conversation that could be had after the meeting.
That we should have on the side.
So that we can move on to 12.3. We have guests that are waiting for that item.
I beg to differ, but I will defer. I think this is actually exactly what the Board should be discussing, but I will defer to the Chair.
We certainly, we certainly, we spent, again, we spent Measure B the way that Measure B was supposed to be spent. Again, anytime you, your reports are showing that you're spending less on instruction, be ready to be criticized for it. And again, I was the person who brought that to the attention of the Board. I did that. I brought it to the attention of the Board. And then we continued to work on changing that. But it's not because we've done anything that was improper. We stayed true to what we should have done with the parcel tax funds.
Thank you, Chancellor. I'd like to note that there are Board members that may, if there are any Board members that have other questions, or feel that they didn't get enough information, or feel that they have questions with the audit, I would not like to leave the impression that only those Board members who specifically asked questions have read the material and are concerned. There being none, we'll call the question. And we will then, if there are no other questions, we'll close the public hearing at 8:50. We're closing the public hearing now on item 5.1, and we're moving to item 12.3, which we are, we're going to our consent calendar, but we're moving 12.3, which is an action item, out of courtesy for some of our members of the public here, who are here to discuss that item. So we'll bring up item 12.3. And item 12.3 is the, our general obligation bond, and that is consider approval of Resolution 18/1905, calling November 2018 bond election. And the presenter is Chancellor Legere. Do we have, we'll need a motion and a second for this item, and then we'll have...
Second at item 11.
Okay, now we have the discussion. I know that we have some public comment on this item as well.
Andreas, I'm clover, clover. I'm sorry, I couldn't get it out.
I'm sorry to interrupt. But I think it's, if, following the public hearing, I think the intention was to...
Did we vote on the item now?
No, no. It's 12.3 and 12.4. So 12.3 is consideration of calling the November election for the bond.
Sorry.
And 12.4 is the parcel tax.
So we should have put, so you want to, you want us to do 12.3? We only have 12.3 there, so that we should modify...
I think this was 12.4 first, and then 12.3.
Oh, 12.4 first. Okay, sorry.
Why is it 4 first? 12.3?
Move and second it for 12.3.
Yeah, we said 12.3, yeah? Okay.
We've done that. She wants us to move to 12.4. Out of order.
So, shall we put it on the move up? So, okay, so I need to amend the, so I need to amend the agenda. So we need to have a vote to amend the agenda, to have 12.4 moved from action to, or moved up as well, with 12.3.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
It's in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Shall we adjust the Board there?
Yeah. I can see a puzzled look on the trustee's face. It is simply to bring the item, since you had a public hearing on the parcel tax item, you're now just bringing the action item up, so they're together. That's the point. Not, so, sorry if that caused any confusion. So now you'll consider the action item regarding the parcel tax, which is the item you just had the public hearing on.
So you'd like us to do that before we discuss 12.3?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Andreas, he's sat down already.
I'm sorry.
All right, so, so we will call item 12.4 for vote, and we'll need a motion and a second to call it for vote, and then, okay, it's been moved in second, now there's time for this...
Make a clarification of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, 12.4. Oh, with Rowan.
Right.
And, right. So we're bringing item 12.4, Consider Approval of Resolution 18/1906, Calling November 18th Special Election, Special Tax Election. The, it's been moved in seconds, so the floor is open for discussion. And Trustee Weinstein, did you want to start off?
Yes. This is the appropriate time to ask questions?
Ask questions, make your motion. Now's the time.
Okay. So, one of the things that I am concerned about with 12.3 is I...
I'm sorry, 12.4.
I'm sorry, 12.4, which is the parcel tax. Correct?
Yes, we're right, we're right.
Okay, all right. First of all, we're not talking about not having a parcel tax if this one doesn't get passed. We're talking about whether we want the parcel tax 2000, in November, or two years down the road. So isn't that the case?
That is correct.
Okay. So the other thing is, what I'm trying to figure out in this parcel tax, and at some point, the bond tax, but more so here, is when you give information and you say, "We are going to do X, Y, and Z, Citizens Oversight Committee, Joint Governance, and the other things that are mentioned," I want to know how we can hold our Board, our Chancellor, accountable for that process? How does, how does that happen? How does the accountability happen? I hear the process that you're mentioning, and we had a process for the last one as well, and we didn't actually follow that process. So what I need to know for this one is, how are we, even with the good ideas that you have in terms of doing it, how do we, how do we make sure that there's accountability and we actually do what we say we're doing?
Trustee, Dr. Weinstein, Trustee Weinstein, and it was something that we debated and discussed a lot when we met with the constituents. We first came up, and that was Mr. Mills and myself, with something called a review team that would look at what's going on internally, closely with the Citizen Oversight Committee, because there would be two members of the Citizen Oversight Committee there. The constituents were, while they wanted the accountability, they felt like adding another layer onto what we already have was not appropriate, and that what we have, we should make work instead. The, so, in order to answer exactly the concern that you have, it was suggested that we need to develop a Board policy, as well as an administrative procedure, so that that, the Board policy would hold the Board accountable, the procedure would hold the administrators accountable for that. And they want to make sure that we don't wait until the bond passes for us to develop that Board policy and administrative procedure, that we do it right away. So that's how we can really hold the Board and everybody else accountable, to make sure that things happen the way that they should. And just for your information, I've already talked to the person who helps us to develop our Board policies and administrative procedures, and he's starting to work on that, on the language for the Board policy and the administrative procedure for us.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional questions? With Trustee Weinstein, are you, okay. Do, Trustee Nikki?
Oh.
Did you, I'm sorry.
Did Nikki want to go first? Did you want to...
Are you done?
I was going to ask about making a motion to defer it until next time. Was this the time to do it?
Yeah, go ahead and do that, and then Nikki will take you up to Trustee Weinstein's turn.
Yeah. I want to bring up the motion again, to defer to the next meeting, or to move the meeting forward, so, because I don't think four days is adequate for the Board to go over the wording and to make sure that everything was necessary, that we need in there. So I'm just going to make that motion.
I'll second that.
So, Madam Clerk, shall we do a roll call?
Could we have discussion on the motion?
We could have discussion on the motion.
Thank you. Anytime, am I recognized?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. So, we just got a question about accountability, and I'm trying to understand in terms of the language. I actually really appreciate the changes in the language. It's more specific. And this is obviously a really challenging situation. We're facing budget cuts, and if this isn't renewed, we're in trouble. If we don't put this forward right now, then we risk that it won't be approved, or that we won't get a second shot in 2020. I get that. This is, this is a challenge. And yet, I want to come back to the accountability question, because I'm wondering, in fact, what the, and maybe this is a legal question, and so we've got some of our legal team here, and so maybe this, maybe this is a legal question. But let's say we pass this. Let's say we, you know, the Board puts this forward, the voters approve it, and then let's say we actually don't follow that process. Just a point, and, case in point, this year, we passed a budget overwhelmingly. The dollars in that budget for the parcel tax were supposed to be spent on instruction. When the actuals came back, it was widely, you know, wildly different actual expenditures. And I understand that sometimes that happens, but the consequences then, it's not like we're going to give the money back, and we could, we could even say, well, so, if in fact, we violate our own policy and the policy of the language, what are the actual consequences in terms of what happens to us? How are we really held accountable if the, if the Board or the administration does something that doesn't follow that process?
Yeah, ask one counsel, Mr. John Palmer, to respond.
Is this on now?
Yeah, it's on now.
My name's John Palmer. I'm an attorney at Work Harrington in Settcliff, and I serve the district. To answer your question, the measure is approved, forms a contract with the voters, and a voter in the district could bring a suit to enforce it, enforce the terms of the contract. And I would guess that were the court to find for the plaintiff in that case, the district would be ordered to return the money from some other source, so that it could be properly spent. But I think that maybe your question is more simply answered through your traditional governance, which is, I assume at the beginning of the year, you make a plan with the Chancellor about what you want to have accomplished, and this can be an item in there, that you then look at the end of the year and say, "Did you accomplish it?" And I would imagine that that's your primary form of accountability. I mean, it's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult question when you're talking about general fund dollars, because they are all fungible, but that would be my answer.
All right. So just following up on that, we've had four days, maybe five, the outside, to look at this language. We've been asking for this language for months. I've been asking for this language for months. And here we are at the 12th hour, we're getting this. I haven't had a chance to really properly look at it, look at the protections that we would want in place, and the guidance. I think another couple of weeks to give consideration of this matter would actually be quite helpful to this Board. So I would urge adoption of this amendment to the motion.
We do have a motion on the floor.
Call the motion.
Trustee, go on.
Okay, so, usually in that corner, there's literature of stuff that's promised, academic success, learning, inspiring students, career training, and support for students. And when I read the actual text that was on the June 5, 2012 ballot for Measure B, that says, quote, "To provide College of Alameda, Laney College, Merritt College, and Berkeley City College secure funds that cannot be taken by the state and support affordable college, one, support affordable college education, including, two, providing core academic programs, including math, science, and English, training students for successful careers, and, three, educating students to transfer to university." So, in reading this literature, it seems the Measure B parcel tax would play like an integral role in making these successes happen. Yet, when I look at the most recent expenditure report, that was from April 21, 2018, and May 20, 2018, I look at parcel, parcel tax Measure B, and I see anns catering for $3,823. I see conference, travel, non-local expenditures for non-students. Thank you, One Grill, $537. More out-of-state travel expenditures for non-students. And candid career computer software for $3,000. So, I'm wondering if much of the money from Measure B, from this report, is spent on catering and non-student travel, then why don't I see this in the literature that's given to students? So that's my first question. And secondly, in looking at the strategic goals for the district, the first goal, A, advance student access equity and success, out of those five points, subpoints, which of that is exemplified by this type of spending?
The, for expenditures in general, for student success, there can be a lot of things that are... Talk about catering. that are, talk about catering. Without having the details, it's hard for me to exactly comment on what that could be, but it could be, it, it has to be things that are appropriate to support faculty or students or staff in what they're supposed to do. If you look at the travel, we do have a lot of faculty and staff who travel to learn, not, not to go on vacation. When you see travel, don't think that it's, it's for fun, but rather to go learn so that they can bring other, they can bring things back to the college to benefit students. And so, so I think that when you see the expenditures, you, you can trace it a whole lot further to see what, what it means. But in general, when, when we talk about student success, of course, the majority of it happens in the classroom, but there is also, there are also other things that happen to help students succeed.
Trustee Galan, do you have any follow-up questions?
You're not.
Trustee Withrow.
Just a point of, I guess, clarification. The next board meeting is on the 4th of September, and I think it's apparent to most of us on the board that we need to move out smartly on this. We can't lag time. Yes, five days is not a whole lot of time, but it certainly is time for most of us to read, digest, and evaluate something like the parcel tax and the bond tax. So I would recommend for the chair that we move to the vote on the motion at hand.
There's been a request to call the question. Do we have?
Question.
There's been two requests to call the question. So we'll call the question, and Madam Clerk, can you proceed with the roll call vote on Trustee Weinstein's motion, which is to delay? Do you want to articulate, so it's appropriately in the minutes as you said it?
Yeah, I wanted to delay the vote for two weeks. I was under the impression that we had something in two weeks. The board does have-
A board retreat.
Okay, so perhaps the board retreat, part of the board retreat can be this measure discussion or measure vote. So I would like to move that, that we do it as part of the retreat in two weeks.
So it's been already moved in second, so Madam Clerk, can you proceed with the roll call vote?
Madam President, are there any public comments in this?
Do we have any, do we have any number? Okay.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, we have, we have two motions, so this is, with the Brown Act, we vote before, we have the public comment before we vote on an item. Since we have two motions, we'll do the public comment now before we vote on either motion. So let's do the public comment now. It's not on the particular, it's a, let's do 12.4, since that's the one we're on now. The parcel tax. And that's Jennifer. Okay.
Hello again. So all year, we've been talking about the parcel tax money and the way that it has been spent. And we hear again and again that the audit says that everything's fine. And the audit does say that administrative salaries have, weren't paid out of parcel tax money. That's true. But the problem with writing this parcel tax language, as I know now from being in these meetings, is that there's sort of a push-pull. You, you want it to be broad enough that you can actually spend money in ways that will support students and support all the activities that you want to support, but you also want it to be tight enough that it's not being spent on things that it shouldn't be spent on, right? Whatever those are. So just answering the question that, you know, the auditor says everything's fine again and again, to me, is really not answering the question. If you look again at your budget books and you look at 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18, you will see that you all approved budgets that allocated 6.5 to 6.6 million dollars for part-time faculty salaries. You all said this parcel tax money should be spent on instruction, right? And it's not about the jobs, it's about the instruction that we offer to students, right? However, despite the fact that you all approved budgets of 6.5 and 6.6 million dollars going to part-time faculty, the audited actuals in 14, 15 were $537,000 to part-time faculty. In 15, 16, audited actuals were $258,000 to part-time faculty. Audit actuals in 16, 17, $524,000 for part-time faculty. So you are spending, we are spending as a district less than 10% of what you're budgeting on the instruction directly in the classroom. That is where the problem is. We can say again and again that we intend to do something, but if we don't actually do it, then what does that intention mean? So I, as much as anyone, do not want to see our district lose $8 million a year. I know what that will cost to faculty, to staff, and most importantly, to our students. We know that, but we're also not interested in continuing to write a blank check that has no accountability associated with it and being sort of forced into a corner saying, you must do this or else. So I really beg of the board to do, you know, what we've been talking about all year and do the right thing. Let's see the money be spent appropriately. We have a COC. We had oversight in the last one, but the COC is basically marginalized, right? Their ideas and their thoughts are said not to be important. So we don't want to lose this money, but we do want to see that the money be spent appropriately and in the way that you all intended it, the voters intended it, and that we say we're going to do it again and again. Thank you.
Do we have any, any other public speakers on 12.4?
Of course.
Okay. So Madam Clerk, can you proceed with the roll call?
Advisory vote for student trustee Galan.
This is for moving this two weeks?
Correct.
Yes.
Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
No.
No.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
No.
Trustee Riley?
No.
And trustee Brown?
No. Well, okay, so we're-
Motion fails.
So the motion fails. We still have the item of 12.3 that has been moved in second that is on the floor.
Assistant Brown?
And we have two-
You, you still have the item 12.4.
Or 12, sorry, I meant 12.4, not 12.3. So, and we have two public speakers on 12.4.
No, no, you're still on the parcel tax item.
That's what I'm, that's, yeah, we're on 12.4. Lynda just said we have two more speakers?
We have two on 12.3.
Oh, she meant to, 12.3. Okay. Never mind. All right. So we're still on 12.4. We have a motion regarding the, whether or not to consider approval of Resolution 181906, calling November 2018 special tax election. So that item's still on the floor. I have, I do have a question regarding that, and I, my question is, the budgets that we adopted, the money that we voted to go to be paid for part-time salaries, did that, was that money allocated out of the general fund if it wasn't out of the parcel tax measure? And is the, is the budget configuration such that the trustees, when we vote on the budget, identify the specific fund from which the, the amounts are paid? So my question is, did we allocate the amount that we approved in the budget for part-time salaries?
Vice Chancellor Johnson?
Yes, the parcel tax going forward, from now on, the measure is going, it's been allocated to the presidents far as the part-time. They will be allocating their resources from the shared governance process they have at their campus site. It will be actually doing the posting of those entries to the finance department every year. And going forward, we're building this budget for 1819 based on their shared governance process far as what they're allocating actually to the measure. So it's going to go through a college process first, come before PBC, and it's going to be brought before the board as an adopted budget, and we're going to ensure that we enforce those processes that we're putting in place, and we're going to be allocating the budget as appropriated when you adopt that budget in September.
Thank you, VC Johnson. Chancellor, I guess my question was, the money that we, the money in the budget allocated for part-time salaries, did we allocate that money? Was it out of the general fund instead of Measure B? But did they, I want, I'm asking is, did we follow our budget vote?
What, we, we certainly followed the budget, and I wish President Karras were here to share with you his experience, is that we give the funds to the colleges, they, they allocate it to, to hire part-time faculty and do what they need to do. Somehow, at the end of the year, there is a recalculation that happens at the district that switches the funds, and then it shows the actuals being less than what it used to be. It is a practice that we have stopped once we, we know that's what was going on. And as Vice Chancellor Johnson just explained to you, we certainly have a different way moving forward that we're going to have it so that we can really get credit for where we spend the funds and not have to redo calculations at the end of the year. But from everything that, that I know from, especially from President Karras, we, the parcel funds have been allocated for the part-time, and that's what he, as a college president, has done with, with the funds.
Thank you, Chancellor and VC Johnson. Do we have any questions on item 12.4?
12.4?
We have trustee Nikki.
Parcel tax.
I should, I should say that instead of the number. Parcel tax.
Thank you. I, I sense we're moving to a vote, and I just, I want to share my thoughts briefly on this because this is a hard thing. And as I said before, you know, we're, we're just in such bad budget times, so I intend to vote no on this. And, and I want to explain why because I think it's, this is a hard, this is probably the hardest vote I've, I've done in 14 years. I, I have deep concerns over the fiscal management in this district. From the beginning of the year, we've had inaccurate, widely varying budget figures. I still, I, and, and this is, this is not disparage to current finance team. I think this current finance team has come in and, and, and working hard, and, and yet I think as a board, we've yet to see the, the results. We haven't had time to do that yet, and so I want to be really clear about that. But the actual expenditures have been in stark contrast with initial budgets that the board's approved, notwithstanding the preceding statements. And we have budget processes that have just aroused deep suspicion, conflict. Every, every meeting, we've got our academic senate president, somebody who is widely respected throughout this district, bringing deep concerns about processes. And, you know, planning and budgeting team doesn't get the budget until well after people have gone, and there really isn't a way of doing this. At the same time, we've seen massive increases in district spending, district office spending, and cuts at all the colleges and, in fact, class, cuts in class offerings. The Citizens Oversight Committee, which is supposed to be our citizens' check, has been routinely ignored, dismissed. They, they come time after time after time and say, we need better information, and that doesn't seem to happen. I went to that meeting to just try to get some information, and I was harshly criticized by our chancellor for simply showing up to a meeting and asking a few pretty benign And what that led me to believe is that this administration has no intention of, of sharing accurate, timely information. And so as, as hard of a decision as this is, I don't think I can go to the public and ask the public to put their confidence in this district right now. And I hate saying that because I deeply care about this district. I deeply care about the students. And, and I know I may be a minority on this board and this vote, but I don't want my vote to be seen as, as callous, as indifferent to the, the actual lives of our faculty and staff and the, and the hard work that everybody, including our administrators, are doing. Thank you.
Trustee Withrow.
I'd like to take a bit of a different focus. I've got a number of years in finance under my belt in a number of situations, and it's my feeling that the, the current incumbents that we have in our finance department, plus the key executives, obviously including the chancellor, are very professional in terms of taking the funds that are available and allocate them in a fashion that would, in, quite frankly, push towards student success. We don't have the student success we should by any means, but we do understand that you can only go so far with the funds that we have. Now, one thing that, just a, a number of members of the board and a number of the constituents that we have here, because we represent the community, we have from the federal level and from the state level and from the local areas and from the courts, a plethora of unfunded mandates. And for some reason, those aren't understood, but we have requirements that we don't get funding for, and they have to come out of hide because they are, in fact, the law. We have one right now that we're looking at that has to do with the emergency preparedness, and there's no way we have the resources to cover the requirements that the feds and the state have demanded that we put into effect. We don't have those funds. That's just one area. There's a whole plethora of items, again, unfunded mandates. None of this is easy, but I tell you that I have a great deal of respect for the people that are working on it. I have a great deal of respect for our chancellor and the, and the commitment that he has made, some of the changes he's made since he's been here. And I have a lot of respect for the, the professionalism of the finance staff that we have. And I have, I have respect for the people that, quite frankly, that are concerned. I mean, they're concerned over not having the funds to do the job that we're supposed to be doing. But I don't think we gain anything by degrading the process and degrading the personalities involved. Now, this particular item, we just talked about a, a two-week delay. It's not a two-week delay that, the reason it was voted down. The next board meeting, the next board meeting that we have is the 4th of September, and we have to be prepared for the 6th of November? Excuse me, that doesn't work. That just does not work.
Why can't we?
That's all I'm saying.
Thank you very much, trustee Withrow.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Weinstein, we, it's, it is 9:25, and we haven't gone to the bond, and you have had a chance.
Okay.
So if you, okay, so let's call the question, and Madam Clerk, if you could take the roll call.
Advisory vote for student trustee Galan?
No.
Advisory vote for student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
No.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Brown? And trustee Riley?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is the bond, and I will say the words, 12.3.
I'll move that item, Madam Chair.
So it's been moved in seconds so we could have the discussion, and we have public comment on this one as well. We appreciate your patience. Andreas, and John BellPiero?
Good evening, President Brown trustees and staff. My name's Andreas Kaluver, Secretary Treasurer of the Alameda County Building and Construction Trades Council. And here, and I've got representative also of some of my affiliated unions, sprinkler fitters, IBW labors, plumbers and steam fitters, carpenters as well, too. We have more folks, but they're over the city of Oakland on another project, and we're here in strong support of placing the bond measure on the upcoming November ballot. I'd like to take the opportunity to talk about the great partnership the trades have had with the community college now, I think for almost a decade in terms of the bond measures. I think we've had lots of success in the projects we've done. I think we've made significant progress around hiring of local residents and graduates. I think we can do more and we should do more about that as we revisit our partnership and the agreement we have. But we definitely urge you to move forward and place us on the bond and knowing that, you know, our membership will be 100% behind it and making sure it does pass voter approval in November. So thank you for your time and hope we put it on the ballot. Thank you.
John, can you state your last name for us, please?
Yeah, it's always a tough one. It's BellPiero. Yeah, so, good evening, Chancellor, trustees, staff. My name's John BellPiero, and I am a field representative with Carpenter's Local 713 here in Alameda County. We represent roughly 35,000 members, many of who reside in this district, and some of whom have graduated from one of the colleges in Peralta District or have taken many classes. We ask that you support this and put this bond measure on the November ballot, and we will continue supporting it through the campaign. We've had a longstanding relationship with Peralta Colleges, and we would like to maintain and continue to build that relationship, including building some new facilities, creating some living wage jobs, and training new apprentices. Thank you very much.
Pardon?
What was your name?
This is public comment on the bond, right?
But do you have a card in?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes.
So my name is Louis Quillen. I'm Department Chair of Machine Technology at Laney College, been a faculty member here for 15 years. I was also co-chair of the Districtwide Facilities Committee for two years and five years on that committee and another two years on the Laney Facility Committee. So I recognize very much the need for this bond. My concern is, we passed a bond in 2006, we made a plan for it in 2009, and the problem we have is many of the same buildings that were on that plan in 2009 are on this same plan now and being requested. We didn't get anything done with $390 million. My concern is that we have a bond that we don't get things done again. The problem isn't that we need a bond, we definitely need a bond. We need repairs, we need new buildings. The problem is, we need a better execution of that bond. So I call for accountability on the part of this Board. I call for accountability on the part of General Services in executing that bond because that did not happen with the $390 million. We would not have all the same projects we have on this bond that were on the last bond. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments regarding item 12.4, the facilities bond?
I do.
I'm sorry, did I say 12.4? We're going to call it just the facility bond.
Thank you. I, too, also really feel this is a very important bond to have. I would like to ask the chancellor, or, I'd like to ask the chancellor, how can we prioritize the buildings that need the most work so that when we, when we and if we receive the funds, that we together find a way to plan ahead and actually work on those buildings that need the most help first? Now, I know that's not easy because there's a lot of buildings that need help, but I would like to see us plan and prioritize. Can you recommend how we might do that?
Thank you, trustee Weinstein. I have really excellent experience in executing a bond. As a matter of fact, there is, I have a colleague in the audience, Mr. Gary Moriarty. Right after the bond passed at Solano Community College, we put forth and we presented to the Board a plan on how we would execute the bond. If you go, despite the publicity, negative publicity that happened with the grand jury report, which was of false information that people keep repeating, if you go today to Solano Community College, you're going to see that not only did we execute based on the greatest needs first, but we also have, they also have three sites, and there were constructions going on, all three of them at the same time, because of the time that we took to put in process, to put in place, an execution plan that the Board approved that is still working really well. Furthermore, we strengthen that plan with strict involvement of the individuals who form the departments whose projects were on the list. And therefore, they made sure they worked very closely with us to make sure that happens. What I want to assure the Board and the public is that after the passage of this bond, you're going to see, Mr. Moriarty still exists and he will still be able to help me, you're going to see a plan of execution that you have not seen before, and to make sure that projects are on time and that they are moving forward. Because when the voters approve for us to take care of our business, we do need to take care of our business. That's the integrity that I bring to you and the integrity that we're going to use to make sure that both the parcel tax and the bond are executed in perfect harmony.
Thank you.
Trustee Handy and then trustee Jordan. We've listened to people speak for the entire Board in saying they didn't have enough time. There are those of us who are not speaking because we did have enough time. We've been talking about this. You have students, you're parading students here. Faculty members are getting brand-new students to come in the first week of education to the Board meetings to tell us how horrible the buildings are and falling down. We know that. We also know that students have never been at this campus before, don't know what Board members are. So we know what it's on. You cannot have it both ways. Either we're going to support and try to get the money to fix our ailing infrastructures, or we're going to sit here and we're going to talk about what didn't happen. We have a different group of people. We have audit reports that show where it's going. We have people planting articles in newspapers. Come on, folks, we've seen this over and over again. This detracts from the education that you, as faculty members, want to give to our students. It detracts from our students wanting to come here when you're slamming the district. So we can't have it both ways. I mean, I'm trying to stay quiet on this, but I am so tired of watching these games going on back and forth, back and forth. We knew this was coming, we did. We did a poll of the community. I represent Peralta, but I also represent a constituency, and we asked the questions about what do you think our Board is doing, what do you think about this? We asked the questions, and the community told us what they wanted. We have a small group of voices who come here and tell us what they want, but we're responsible to all of it. Those students sitting back there, these students sitting here deserve to be in structures that are as nice as other facilities, and we have no other way of getting the money. So if our community is willing, let's support our students. Let's support the faculties with structures where they don't have to put buckets on to catch the water that's coming in. So, you know, I really have a hard time with a lot of the shenanigans that is going on because I'm not quite sure what it is that we're trying to do here. Are we trying to support our four colleges by giving our students the type of infrastructure that they deserve, giving our faculty the type of clean and great classrooms that they're supposed to have? Or are we here to continue to degrade our staff who is working really hard without always having all the accurate information? People are acting like the community is getting the impression that somehow we must have been stealing this money. Article planted in the newspaper this week goes against the article planted in another newspaper four weeks ago. If we all determine to work together for the best interest of the student, representing the students, I would love to see the same type of energy come up here where people are telling us how they're trying to actively work to keep every student that we have, that they're recruiting for their classrooms when they know that there are comparable high school programs that would have fed into a summer program, rather than getting students to come in and say, "Why are you cutting all of our programs?" If we all work together to recruit and support and treat each student as if they are the precious jewel that they are, then we can do so much more together. But if we continue playing these games where we have people writing texts and stuff back to each other, and they're saying, "Let's see what we can do if we can keep this off," what we're going to get is what we've always had, and that is just not enough. Thank you. Trustee Jordan.
Board, Chancellor, I just want to bring to everyone's remembrance, and those of you who may not know, last, I think it was last fall, I was on Associated Students of Laney College, and we attended several meetings that were put in place to poll in regards to this bond and how the money should be spent. And I am totally voting yes for this bond to be put on the ballot. We need it. The things that happened in the past have been looked at, there have been committees that have been formed, and people have been polled in the community and at our school to see where the money needs to go. And then we have people who work tirelessly in facilities, like Ms. Amy I'm looking at right now. She works, she's awesome, and she does different things, and she needs the money to help with the facilities at the school. So I urge everyone to just vote yes. I hope that it's okay for me to say that.
We, I'd like to say with regard to the bond, item 12.3, that there's a concept that's called the bounce, and that is how many times your money circulates in your community. The building trades are our neighbors, they're our family, they're our brothers, our sisters, they're our students. We have a program here that we're trying to develop, and we want to strengthen that program. We have voted a policy, a project labor agreement that integrates learning, our students being able to do some of the work on our buildings. We have structures that are from the industrial architecture style that has huge concrete blocks with rubber membranes in them that make it very difficult to repair leaks. It makes it very difficult and expensive to do rehabilitative or modernization work. And so I think that it is incumbent upon all of us to think very hard about putting our personal interests aside and focusing on what the community has asked us to do, which is to be responsible in our stewardship and to make sure that we provide an educational, highly excellent and accessible education. We're not reaching enough of the students that we need to reach because we have a declining enrollment, which means that we should redouble our efforts regarding recruitment, and we should redouble our efforts to support our industry partners, such as our building trades, which are always there for us with regard to helping us with our, not just our, being industry advisors, but also supporting our programs. And so, this actually in education is our chance to be involved in the war on poverty. And I think it's very important to help make sure that people get sustainable jobs and the good education that leads to that, and we have an opportunity to do that right now. And that's what I see with regard to this bond, that this is our self-determination in education and the real war on poverty. We have any?
Madam President.
We have you, but I also see our academic senate president. Clemon, do you need to get a card? And Nikki has a comment, and we'll just make one for you or whatever.
Yes, thank you.
So Nikki, and then we'll have our academic senate president.
Thank you, Madam President. I can't disagree with most of what people have just said. I mean, the district facilities are in horrible shape, and our students deserve better, our staff deserves better. And yet I look at the execution that we've had of bond expenditures. I'm just looking at like College of Alameda as an example. We, several years ago, we were brought plans for two new buildings. I don't know how much money we spent on those plans. My guess is it's in the millions. And then a couple of years later, we got brand-new plans. It turned out that the first plans were so overblown and not correct in terms of what we could afford that we had to start over, and we still don't have that building. And I'm looking at, you know, over the course of the bond expenditure, I'm looking at the College of Alameda, and I'm thinking, "What did we get done?" And it was very, very little. I looked similarly at Laney College. What did we get done? Very, very little. And we've got a bond plan here that's, you know, supposed to take us out 10 years or something like that. And what worries me again is that we had four days to look at this. Four days. Now, we have been talking about this, but has this Board seriously talked about this language? Have we gotten into this language? No, absolutely not. And I look at the history of spending on Berkeley City College, and I'm deeply worried. I'm deeply worried because I don't know where this Board will go in terms of fairness, equity of spending throughout the district, and I'm deeply worried. So I'm, you know, Clemon, maybe you're going to convince me one way or the other here because I'm sitting here really not knowing which way I go, except that I just don't have faith in our district office administration right now. And I hate to say that. I wish I had more faith. Thank you.
Trustee Handy is handling public comment, but Mr. Smith, oh, she's back there getting a card. Mr. Smith, please proceed.
Yes, good evening. And I come to the mic, the public's speaking mic, because I just wanted to respond as a faculty member at Berkeley City College, not as a district academic senate. And I want to just respond as a point of clarity, a point of order, that there hasn't been a single faculty member up here today in public comment who has made any comments about voting this bond measure, this agenda item, down. There hasn't been any faculty members up here saying that we do not need this particular money. And in fact, the only comments that have been made is just, is almost like a reminder to please make sure that there is better oversight over this than has been in the past. And so I'm sorry if that offends anyone, but that is, it is a complete misrepresentation of the faculty who have been up here before you to say that we're trying to have it both ways. If this Board would like for me to bring in many more faculty to talk about how they can't even walk out into the streets of Berkeley, Alameda, Oakland, Emeryville, without talking to 10 people and suggesting that they try the Peralta Community Colleges, if we want more faculty members to come up here before you to talk about the work that they're doing just on the first day of class, to say, "Hey, you know something? We're not going to talk about psychology tonight. We're not going to talk about mathematics tonight. We're going to talk about keeping you with us for the entire semester." There are numerous things to... We're not gonna talk about mathematics tonight. We're gonna talk about keeping you with us for the entire semester." There are numerous things to express the best of Peralta, as the best actually exists. I just wanted to come up here tonight, in this particular moment, just to clarify the fact that we do not do any service for ourselves to knock each other down. I hear that. And I think it should also be, we should be mindful that it goes both ways.
So we're gonna call the question, and we are voting on item 12.3. Oh, Chancellor?
I don't think that I can let it really go without challenging the fact that we have not done what we should have done with the last bond. If you look throughout the district, we've done a lot of work. I think that what we, what we perhaps were mistaken about is that sometimes the cost was higher than what we thought that we could do for our buildings. And for clarification, we do have a brand-new building that's, that's being, the dirt is being pulled out of Alameda every day. There will be beautiful building at College of Alameda. We sometimes underestimate, and I've said this before, we sometimes underestimate what it is that we need because we're afraid that we may not get what, what we want to get. I think this bond measure and this bond program that we're going to undertake is one where we are truthful about what we believe our needs are, and then we will see the results right away. Laney is about to have almost all of its classrooms equipped with technology for the 21st century that we didn't have before, and that thanks to the, to the bond. Sometimes the work that's done may not be flashy, but work is done. And I want to, and if you go to Merritt, the Barbara Lee Building, beautiful. And we have, we still have, we still have money left in, in the last bond. It's not enough to get to where we need to be. That's why we need this bond, so that we can get to where we need to be. We have not wasted the taxpayers' money. And I want to be clear that, that stated. Thank you.
Trust, Madam Chair, I'd like to make one more comment. Can I?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, no?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I wanna, I do wanna say one thing. I strongly support the bond, but I wanna make it clear to the audience, as well as my fellow trustees, that however I vote, whether it's yes or no, it is in the best interest and my care and my concern for students and faculty. So it is not, it is not only one person who owns that. And I wanna be perfectly clear that there has been nobody that I have put down. In fact, I strongly support our new finance department and the work that's being done. And when I ask questions, I'm asking them for a reason, and when I have opinions, it's for a reason.
Point of order, point of order, point of order.
Thank you.
Point of order, through the chair. I do believe we have a collective leadership right now. Thank you very much, Trustee Bonilla, and thank you very much, Trustee Weinstein. I think we should proceed with the vote. There are obviously very strong feelings regarding the different opinions, but we are a collective legislative body that requires a vote. So, Madam Clerk.
So I switched up the vote last time based on my board doc's roll call. I was told not to do that, so let me go revert back. Advisory vote for Student Trustee Galan. Advisory vote for Student Trustee Jordan.
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein, excuse me, Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hewen. Trustee Bonilla. Trustee Riley.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
And Trustee Gonzalez-Hewen. Thank you, motion passes.
Okay, now we are going to the consent calendar. Our friends are leaving us. We'll see you guys. We're gonna go to the consent calendar, which begins on items, at item six. We need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
It's moved.
It's been moved in second. We do still have enough trustees at the dais, so do we have any discussion on the consent calendar? Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? Then we can vote on the consent calendar. We could just, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, now we're gonna go back to our action items, and we start with 6.2. And Trustee Galan, was that yours that you removed?
That was mine.
Okay, would you like, actually, let's do a motion in a second, and then for 6.2, and then we can have a discussion. Okay, it's been moved in second. Trustee Galan, would you please start? Uh, Withrow and Bonilla.
In reading the travel request and expense claim, an ASL instructor from Berkeley City College has asked for $145 in lodging, meals, and incidentals $75. In comparison, someone else from the Disabilities Department at BCC has asked for $149 in lodging, meals, and incidentals $304. So the person that's asking for $75 for meals and incidentals is gone for seven days, whereas the person that's asking for $304, she'll be gone for four days. I don't understand this. It seems like there's a disparity in the spending equity, and I wanna know, I'm not sure who I'm supposed to ask.
May I, may I, you direct your question to the chancellor, and the college presidents approve?
Okay.
So we go to the chancellor.
Chancellor?
What you see for the $75, it's daily? And what you saw?
It's daily, but I just don't understand, I need clarification why the meals and incidentals is twice as much as lodging. And I wanna know what the policy on travel is, and also I wanna know, like, what added benefit is brought back to the students at the Disabilities Department when you double the food and incidentals?
President Tomlin, would you like to address, you want me to?
So I'm looking at both of the instructors' travel, and so there are differences in the conference and also the location. And when the faculty fill out these forms and they do an estimate, they do do the estimate within the allowable in terms of per diem. So it's not always the case that it's the actual in terms of the receipts that get submitted and the expenses that happen when they're at the conference.
Let me just see if Trustee Galan's okay with, do you have any other questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, Trustee Handy.
Well, with that being said, if they are estimating, this is, this is the most standardized form we've had in the years that I've been here. Why would they not be putting the specific per diem allocation per day on the specific hotel allocations? Because we know that, we ask that, we ask that all travel, that people try to, in order to get this approved, that their transportation should be made 21 days in advance to try to get the best rate possible. But yet there's a $600, $600-plus round-trip fare to Connecticut, which it doesn't cost that much from here unless you're doing last minute. So there are policies in place that we ask that people do their best to keep the cost down as much as possible, but that doesn't seem to be the case in there. But if people, if you're having a disparity with people coming, going to the same conference, this is never gonna come back to us to be approved once they have their trip. So we don't know if it comes to that amount or if it exceeds that. So the only thing that we can expect in being asked to review these is that the accurate numbers would be there and that there would be a consistency. And since there are one, two, three, four people, five total signing off on it, if, if there's no standardization on this, then we just don't know. And maybe we just need to have a...
Trustee Handy, there are different conferences they're attending, not the same conference.
Okay, not the same conferences.
Different states.
In different states, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, but, but as, as the trustee is saying, it doesn't make a difference in the meals and incidentals, because meal and incidentals are based, per diem is based on a government-set rate for that particular state, correct?
But the states are different as well.
No, that's what I'm saying. But whether, he's saying that the numbers don't add up, the estimated totals based on the numbers that are given, is that correct?
Yeah.
We'd be happy to, to sit down with, I think the president would be happy to sit down with the student trustee and go, go through the item.
So let me just propose for, we have the 6.2 up for motion, so would you, Nick, would, is the idea to have greater clarity and that the vote would be approving, pending clarification and accuracy regarding the figures?
I just want, like, tighter spending, and these numbers just concern me. Like, I'm unsure if this is standard practice, where, and I, Trustee Handy was saying, "I don't know what the actuals are gonna be. We won't get that. This is what we'll see, and then this is the end of it." And I'm just concerned with what's in front of me, how the meals, incidentals, $304 per day, like, $100 meals, incidentals, like breakfast, and then $100 lunch, then dinner.
No, it's, no, it's $75 for the day, and that's breakfast, lunch, dinner, water, incidentals, and all of that. That's how the per diem, and that's, that's set not by us, but by, by the payment rates.
Right.
But you, what, she's...
Yeah, what I was gonna say, Nick, is that your questions should be answered, and we have the college president's approval of the item. And what I hear as a possible facilitating of a solution is that the item would be approved pending further review by the college president and the chancellor regarding the accuracy of the numbers.
Yes.
Okay, then that would be the motion for 6.2. So we need, that's a motion, and we need a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Do we have any further discussion on the item? Okay, Madam Clerk, can we go to the roll call?
Advisory vote for Student Trustee Galan.
Yes.
Advisory vote for Student Trustee Jordan.
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein. Trustee Handy. Trustee Withrow. Trustee Gonzalez-Hewen. Trustee Bonilla. Trustee Riley. And Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Madam President, it's 10 o'clock. Recommend that we extend the meeting for 20 minutes?
I accept that recommendation reluctantly, but we've got more work to do. So...
I'm gonna vote now.
So we have to put that to a vote. Do you, do you need, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, not philosophically, I mean actually, any opposed? Okay, motion, any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the action calendar that we have is, let's do those up there first. Let's do 9.2. Who pulled 9.2?
I did.
Okay, let's have a motion in a second, and then Trustee Gonzalez-Hewen, if you would like to get us started on that one. Do we have a motion to, okay, and, and, okay, I'll second because, okay, so, Trustee Gonzalez.
So this is a ratification, and then the approval of an agreement for a contract that is a six-month consulting contract. And in that, in that six months, we're going to spend $166,000 for this consultant. So on an annualized basis, you can just do the math, and it comes to a very big number. Now, I understand that this is not money that is coming out of our general fund. This is coming out of our retirement investment fund. And I understand this is a specialized area of consultation. But I find it unconscionable that this board would approve a contract of well over $300,000 at a period where we are slashing budgets right and left. The optics of this just look horrible. And, and in fact, I think the reality of it is horrible. And I, I don't think that we should be ratifying this contract. This is, this is, I don't know, sometimes people use the term gift of public funds. I don't think that's an appropriate term here, but it comes close in my mind. Thank you.
We have Trustee Withrow, and then Trustee Riley.
I think for clarification, and the previous speaker did speak to the fact that it was not coming out of the general fund in any way, shape, or form. It is a complicated area. It's an area that's under the sole domain of the Retirement Board, but the Retirement Board looked at hiring somebody, whether it was a consultant or hiring to a position, which is called an executive administrator. We tried the hiring and didn't get anybody coming out for the amount of monies that we were willing to spend. The individual that we're talking about here, Christine Williams, is converted to a, she was an organic employee. She was converted to a consultant for a period of time in order to carry the Retirement Board, the only employee of the Retirement Board, until we can use headhunters to go into the financial markets and get a, somebody hired to take the position. The $166,925 is an interesting figure. The individual, because it works for the Retirement Board, doesn't have benefits. And so the benefit package is included in that $166. And so then if you take the standard figure of .6, six tenths, and of the $166,925, you come out to $100,155. And if you look at a, it's actually seven months involved, not six, but it comes out to $171,694. And that is less than Christine Williams was making as a vice chancellor for finance. I can tell you that, having come out of the industry, there's no way we're gonna get anybody to come in at that figure. They just aren't. We're paying, right now, Newburger Berman for an administrative fee of over a million dollars a year. To put that into context, it's over a million dollars a year. The goal of the Retirement Board is to get rid of that and have an executive administrator. Now, why do we have it coming before this board? Because the Retirement Board that has the sole jurisdiction here doesn't have the accoutrements, and we don't wanna go into developing the accoutrements of a hiring process and HR process and just the simple payment of, of W2s. and HR process and just the simple payment of of W2s, organizational structure that the institution has that the retirement board does not have. And the retirement board decided as a body that we would go to the institution to go through the process, and then the, we will reimburse the costs to of the institution for this individual. So in effect, you need to be looking at $171,694 for the equivalent annualized figure for this individual.
Trustee Riley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee Withrow, thank you. You've just about taken some of the comments out. Sure, but I do want to say that this about the retirement board. You know, we're we're responsible for hundreds and millions of dollars at, for our retirees. And it is our responsibility to hire the best folks that we can find to carry our mission for us. And the board saw very clearly that this person who had worked with us before, who's an expedientary, can provide the services that we need. And we would be irresponsible to the board and for the hundreds of, I'm talking about hundreds of millions of dollars that we represent on the board to make sure that the appropriate benefits are being paid out. So we took the appropriate measures. We're going to stand by that, and I move that we approve this at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Riley. Do we have any sort of, so we call the question, we need a roll call vote?
Advisory vote for student trustee Galan. Student trustee Jordan. I'll come back. Trustee Weinstein. Trustee Handy. Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Huen.
No.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Student trustee Jordan.
Yes.
Trustee Riley.
Yes.
And trustee Brown.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
The vote on that.
Madam Clerk, could you read back the roll call, please?
Read back the roll call?
Trustee Riley just asked what the vote was. If you could read that back to him, please.
Who's 5-1?
Student trustee Galan abstained.
Student trustee Jordan voted yes. Trustees Weinstein, Handy, Withrow, Bonilla, Riley, and Brown voted yes. Oh, excuse me, Weinstein abstained. And trustee Gonzalez-Huen voted no.
The next item on the agenda is item 11.1.
And item 11.1 is, trustee Handy, I believe, okay, let's let's move item 11.1 and 11.2 from the action calendar be considered together, and that is consider approval of contract with Kevin Kelly Consulting for Distance Education Faculty Training and College Planning Support in the Amount of $55,000, and consider approval of independent contractor agreement for Tim Gibbons in the amount of $57,000 for Distance Education End-user Support for Faculty and Students. Do we have a motion in a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any discussion on this item? Trustee Handy, if you could start us off.
The reason I pull this is, at first I I thought nothing of it. I looked at the descriptions, but then I realized, we're having so much flack about every hiring piece that we do, but there never seems to be any flack about IT and technology. It seems to be a bottomless pit of money that goes in. So when my question that comes up here when I'm looking at these positions, it all sounds good, but aren't these redundant? We have people who are working there who are supposed to be responsible for distance education. So my question is, and I'm sorry, Chase and Cole is not here to answer the question, how many people are actually employed to be doing distance ed, distance education? Because you're looking at adding two more right here to work with the faculty specifically.
Yeah, at least at least one of them was already a consultant with us to to help the faculty. We, as you may remember, we are going through a conversion from Moodle to Canvas. So it requires additional support for the faculty, workshops and what have you, for that transition to be done well. So that's why you have the additional person there.
And so with the with the FTEs decreasing, what are the numbers that we're getting in for distance education?
I don't have, Vice President Miller, do you, any of the presidents to?
It's 18%.
Yeah. For academic affairs.
It's 18% of our FTEs come from distance ed. It's actually grown, doubled in the last few years. So it is a growing area. Vice Chancellor Cole has one faculty that's 1.0 for distance ed.
That, see, that's my question. It seems like that's now three people. That one faculty member, that was supposed to be that person's job. That was my understanding, that this person was there for this piece. And it was my understanding that, I mean, now that we're asking for two more people, it just feels like there's redundancy, and I don't understand why there is no outcry or question about the spendings in this area, but there's always questions about spending in other areas, and especially when you have three people. It's not that I don't think that the faculty needs the training, not at all. I just feel like, looking at the descriptions, that we've got three people providing the same services. So we have a consultant, and now we have a consultant for the consultant. And I just want to know if it's been evaluated to see if this is actually, and this this question came to me from the community, that's why I had to look at it, has it been evaluated to make sure that there's no redundancy, especially since we have put a faculty person in a full-time position for this job? And in bringing in the consultants, who is going to be there? They're talking about the calls, and isn't that what the help desk does on some of the things? Training, I understand, one person, I understand. But three people, I'm not quite understanding because I'm not seeing a separation of the duties.
Help desk for distance ed is different from the your regular help desk because the problems are definitely different. Frankly, having been involved with distance education since the thing got started way back in the 90s, we are way understaffed for distance ed. You probably, once we start making, having greater FTEs as we implement Canvas, we need to have permanent staff that will be, not faculty on reassignment, but permanent staff that need to to do that. Usually for an, a district like ours, a good five full-time staff, where you have training, where you have instructional designing happening, where faculty can really count on somebody to be available to them, where you have people who can record for you and all of that, it can take quite a bit. So I am very comfortable with with what we have right now, but I think as we grow, we need to to do even better and have greater quality individuals working with our distance education.
And then there was one last question I wrote on there is, what was the process? Was this an open process for for anyone, for some, for someone to apply? Because as I read through here, I see a proposal. I didn't see a proposal that someone submitted to the district. Was that open for other faculty members or anyone else to apply for that particular role? Or was that something that was passed on through whatever relationships? I'm not quite sure how that happens, that you get the job, being the faculty liaison in this, but I don't understand what the process was for that person, even though it's a part-time job. What was the process for that, for either of those to get that job?
Yeah, I can't answer that, trustee Handy. I don't, Antoine, were you, are you familiar with any process that was used for the consultant? Again, one of them has been with us for several years, but he may have the ideas.
Only we have Charles Cohen here. She would like to discuss this item.
Hi, everyone. I'm the DE coordinator at Laney College. I am here because Inger, the district DE coordinator, Inger Stark, and VC Cole couldn't make it. But these two people have been indispensable to our team. We are pretty under-resourced in terms, in comparison to other colleges. Kevin Kelly has specifically been spearheading our our online, online equity program. He helped us create this equity rubric that is groundbreaking, and we went and presented it at the conference and actually put Peralta on the map, which was really exciting. So he's going to continue to run the equity program for online education in the fall, along with doing campus training and supporting the campuses and developing their individual DE plans. He championed our, and helped draft and compile data for our district DE plan. And then Tim Gibbons is absolutely essential to our team. He provides support to 20,000 students, all of our students. He is the one person who answers all of their questions about Moodle, about Canvas, about admissions and records. He gets back within three to five minutes sometimes. He's working after hours, and on the weekends, he also supports the DE coordinators as well after hours. So I can't speak highly enough for these two consultants. They are really filling in where we need the support, and I know that they're finite projects, at least in terms of what Kevin Kelly is doing.
Thank you for that report. As I said, I do believe that it's necessary, but I feel I just question the redundancy simply because you took a person from half-time for distance education, then made them full-time for distance education, but then there are two other people who are doing it, so why is that person needed as a full-time position? And the piece with the Moodle and all of that was the reason why that particular CIO was hired, because of that, bringing that piece. But he's not bringing that piece, someone else is bringing that piece. And the union used to always be screaming to us about contracting out and not having it in-house. So those are my concerns as we move forward, and I would like to hear more, no one, and no one can answer the question of how the process of selection, it's not an indictment on those who are doing it, it's the process and the redundancy and the cost for those employees that I have a concern for, and how that's going to be moved on in the future. It's great if we get more. We, I mean, it's wonderful if we get more.
Yeah, we will certainly bring something back to the board for.
Appreciate that.
Great clarification for what we're doing with DE and how we move forward.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we have one minute left of our 20 minutes, so we'll, we will call the question, and Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote on item 11.1 and 11.2?
Advisory vote for trustee Galan, student trustee Galan?
No.
Student trustee Jordan?
No.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Huen?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Riley?
Yes.
And trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Madam President, I'd like to move the balance of the action calendar, all items that have not been considered under section 12. That would be 12.1 through 12.11, and that would be excluding 12.3 and 4. That's my motion.
Second.
That includes a 12.5. We need the bank side as.
I'm not sure if I missed it, but we, I'm hoping that we can address 12.11 because it impacts the availability of health services for students, nurses.
I'm just including that in. My question was.
Oh, okay.
We've answered earlier.
Okay.
I resolved that. So I'm perfectly happy to consider these as a group.
So Nikki, your your motion is to bring all of the action items that haven't been called before?
Yes.
That way we get them all.
That is my motion.
That's okay. And it's been seconded.
Unless we want to stay longer.
Okay, no one wants to stay longer.
Okay, so.
Advisory vote for student trustee Galan?
Is this 12.5?
It would be collective, Nick, everything that has.
Yes.
Advisory vote for student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Huen?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Riley?
Yes.
And trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Were there any people who were on the early hiring list that are still in the audience? Yeah, right, no. Okay, my paper's.
I don't have the clothes. We have announcements, and we are looking for the.
13.1.
Oh, information. Wait, I need my glasses.
The board will be holding a board retreat on Tuesday, July 24th, and will not be accepting regular agenda items at this meeting. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on September 11, 2018 here in the district offices board room. The board is in recess during the month of August. The board would like to wish trustee Bill Withrow a happy birthday, who will be celebrating his birthday on Thursday. Cheers, Bill. The board extends its deepest sympathy to the friends and family of former Peralta student Chris Brown and enjoys this meeting in his honor.
Before we do that.
We did forget, we did forget the trustee reports, but I don't know that anybody wants this.
Yeah, before before we take off, we'll we'll have very few items for the July 24th meeting. We should be about an hour, but not a lot of items.
And just a correction, on September 11, we did decide to change that to September 4, the week prior. So I will be sending out and and asking to, approving a new modified calendar, asking for approval for that at the next meeting.
The meeting for, what is the day? The 10th, it's still the 10th. While it's still the 10th. Okay. Okay, I'm out of here. See you guys later. Hasta la vista.